Let's call this meeting to order. First order of business is, item two, is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the board of supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.23711, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The first one under that, the only one on that, is Community Services Board. The other item, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property for a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And that is the former Blacksburg-Millsco property. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creese?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bree?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gay?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye.
Need a motion to go out of work session.
So moved.
Close meeting. I mean, I've been working so hard, I can't tell the difference between closed meeting and no work session. Need a motion to go out of closed meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bree?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gay?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye. Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second on the certification. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Bree?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye. The next items on our agenda is invocation and our pledge of allegiance. This is a time when the Board observes a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand. And will be led by, I can't administrate a pledge after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Well, we have several public hearings tonight. The first one is the proposed ordinance establishing the stormwater management ordinance.
Chair, I believe, Marty, can you give us an overview of just the ordinance and what the public hearing is about tonight?
Sure. What you have before you is an ordinance establishing Montgomery County Stormwater Program. And so what the purpose is, is, well, first of all, this is a mandated program by the state, so we have very little discretion on this matter. We are required to adopt a stormwater ordinance. And so, this really isn't the, you know, the decision of the county to go ahead and do this program, and the state has gone ahead and mandated that we do this. And our goal was to have this in place by July 1st, so we need to have it approved in June at the latest if possible. So what this ordinance does is it requires an individual who is constructing or disturbing property of more than one acre to get a stormwater permit. And what this does is it incorporates some of the things we already require. Right now, we require an erosion and sediment control permit. However, right now, we're not doing stormwater. But now, people or corporations or individuals who are constructing, they're going to have to now take care of water runoff, but they're also going to have to take care of quantity and quality issues. They're going to have to make sure the water, the stormwater that's coming off is clean when it goes into the, into the public drainage areas. And so what's required is, when someone comes to get a permit, they're going to have to submit plans. They're going to have to submit a stormwater plan, which will have an ENS component, it'll have a stormwater component, and it'll also have a stormwater pollution component, meaning how they can clean the water and make sure that the wrong things don't get into the stream. What the state has done for us is that they've created technical criteria, and what this ordinance does is it incorporates that criteria. And so they'll have to, when they're submitting plans, they're going to have to follow that technical criteria. And what this ordinance also does is it creates a stormwater administrator. The administrator under the ordinance is the county administrator, however, he designates somebody to do the work. And so, the ordinance says county administrator or his or her designee. And so, that individual is in charge of reviewing plans, approving plans. What else, the other things we're required to do is we're required to monitor, we're required to inspect, and we're also required to enforce. And so if somebody is not following, if someone doesn't get a permit and they do the work, we're going to have to enforce, make sure they do, shut them down. If so, if someone has already got a permit but is not following what they're supposed to do, we have to enforce and shut them down if that's the case. So there's an enforcement mechanism too. The other thing is, is that, which is a bit different than from the erosion sediment control, is that there's a long-term maintenance component, where we have to ensure that documents are recorded that will allow the county to go in and inspect and maintain, or ensure that the owners maintain, there's these stormwater facilities that they're putting in. It could be a detention pond, it could be a check dam, it could be a number of things that's intended to stop sedimentation to go into the creeks and into the water. So we'll be requiring documents to be recorded that will then not only bind the current owner, but will also bind future owners. And so those covenants will roam the land. The other thing we're required to do is set up an appeal process. If someone feels like we're not administering the ordinance correctly, or requiring them to do something they don't think they're required to do, we're required to put it in the appeal process. And the way it's set up now, some localities have made their boards the appeal body, but we have instead proposed that we use the local building code appeals. The reason for that is, one, it gets this way, you guys don't have to deal with it, but two, it puts in the hands of people who are involved in building. And so they have the expertise, because if you remember, that board is made up of engineers and builders and property maintenance people, so there's a certain expertise that's built into that body. And plus, that body doesn't do a whole lot, so this will help, they have the time to do the workload. And then after that, someone can then appeal to the circuit court if it's not, if they don't like the decision of the building code. But they have to, the local building code of appeals, but they have to go through them there. The other thing I want you to look at at the end is the fee structure. And the fee structure is set up by the state. This comes right out of the state, and it's not cheap. And if you look at, like, for just a general permit, it starts as low as $209, but when you go up to disturbing property of greater than an acre and less than five acres, the fees go up to $2,700. And then they even go higher if you're doing more than 10 acres. So this process is going to be a little bit expensive for those who are disturbing. We're required to give a portion of that fee to DEQ, and then the other portion we will keep to offset the county's costs in administering the program and enforcing the program. Questions? That's kind of a general overview.
Comments, questions, board members?
Chair? Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, let's do that, and then I'll...
Well, we have no one signed up to speak at this public hearing, but if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the Board in regard to the proposed stormwater management ordinance, please do so at this time.
Okay. See no one coming, but is there a comment?
I did want to make just a couple of comments. First, just generally to the citizens, this is a new topic for a lot of folks. Other communities in the state have been dealing with stormwater issues for some time. We recognize that we're going to have to do an extremely good job of providing education and information to the citizens about how this affects them. We'll be working hard to do that. Even though this ordinance goes into effect July the 1st, we'll be spending the better part of the first year working on educational and information to provide to the citizens on exactly what does this mean and how does it affect me if I'm trying to develop property. Part of that, the county attorney mentioned the county administrator or his designee. I'd like to recognize the designee this evening, Mr. Doug Burton. Doug, if you would stand up back there. Doug has been hired as our Director of Engineering and Regulatory Compliance. Doug's a PE, he's been in this business almost 30 years. Currently, he's the area land use engineer for VDOT in the Salem area. Been very involved with stormwater activities through his association with VDOT. He's also spent four years as a project manager for a consulting firm in private industry. He also worked with the county of Roanoke and the Roanoke County Utility Department, and one of the jobs he had while he was working with them was overseeing the construction of the Spring Hollow water system. So he's had quite a bit of experience with water issues, and actually told me he was excited to pull out some of those old calculations and start working on it. So I said, "You've got to be the man for the job," because that'd drive me crazy. But Doug, we're looking forward to having you join us in a couple of weeks, and I wanted you to have the opportunity to meet Doug this evening. Also, I want to thank Carolyn Howard, who's sitting over here on the other side. Carolyn's with Draper Aiden. Carolyn has been our consultant on call for this project. As Marty said, this was a, he provided a general summary. This is one of those meetings that when I go to it, it just makes my head go numb after about 10 minutes, because it is very complicated. That's why we've got to spend a lot of time making sure we understand it so we can communicate to the citizens, and they understand it. But Carolyn, thank you and your firm for all the help you've been to us in getting us to where we are now. The state did give us the authority to delay becoming MS4, or Stormwater Utility System, until January 1st. We're going to move forward July the 1st. We feel like we're ready for that with our ordinance. We also feel that gives us time to get things started, and really, hopefully, will let us dictate where we're going instead of having DEQ come down with more regulations.
And if we don't do it July 1st, DEQ will do it July 1st.
Yeah, they start it July 1st.
Which means our citizens will have to send it to them for review.
That's a good point.
And it won't be as quick a turnaround as we can do. So that's really the biggest component of why we want to go ahead and do it instead of wait until January 1st, because the ordinance is still going to affect. It's whether we want to run the program.
Right, thank you.
And there's, our citizens would be better served by us running it than DEQ running it.
Yes.
Because they'll be running it from Roanoke or Richmond and not from Montgomery County. The other thing I want to point out and mention is that there's certain activities that are exempt under the state law, and they're generally the same activities that ENS is exempt, and there are such things as, well, services in deep mining, which we don't see too much of that around here, hopefully, but all agricultural activities, they're exempt under the program. So if somebody's, for instance, disturbing a couple acres to build a barn, they're not going to have to comply with the ordinance. Single-family residences that are built as part of a larger common plan, meaning, let's say someone puts a subdivision together, when they put the subdivision in and they do the drainage and all that, they come under that, they come under the ordinance. However, when you come in to build your house on the lot, and if the lot's, if you're disturbing less than one acre, then you're exempt. If you're disturbing more than an acre, then you're going to have to do a plan, but it'll be at a much lower scale, it'll be an agreement and lieu of plan, which means you don't have to actually submit, you don't have to get an engineer to do a plan. What you'll do is you'll agree to do certain things under this agreement and lieu that we'll have set up through our administrator. Another activity would be anything less than an acre that's disturbing in a subdivision or not in a subdivision. So if, let's say you have a parcel of land and you're putting in a road or something, if you're disturbing less than an acre, you're not, you don't have to come under this ordinance requirement. And then, I think that's about it. But those are some of the things, especially the agricultural one, because they're usually exempt from land use regulations, and they are again on this. The last thing is DEQ has approved, for the most part, an ordinance, so we're ready to go.
Marty, for the purpose of those who may be watching from home, or those who may be in the audience tonight, now, Montgomery County is a large place. Now, does this include Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Virginia Tech that we're doing?
No. No, it includes just the, what we refer to as the unincorporated area of the county.
Okay.
Blacksburg, Christiansburg do have their own stormwater ordinances, so you'll come under their regulations and not ours, but that's a good question.
And do Virginia Tech have their own also?
Well, yeah. Yeah, Tech, well, Tech would come under Blacksburg, because they're in Blacksburg. There is a Tech farm in Montgomery, but that would come under the agricultural, and they'd be exempt.
Now, the fees to run the program would, I mean, I've heard people talk of the rain tax, that citizens somewhere down the line will be paying to manage this program?
Correct. Now, this is not the rain tax. The fees associated with this program are, because you remember, the only people coming to this are people who are actually disturbing more than an acre. And so, with the fees, they're paying permit fees. They're going to pay fees for our administrator to review the plans and issue the permit and then go out. And then there's also an inspection fee, an annual inspection fee, which isn't too bad. But there'll also be that annual inspection fee going on too as well. Because we're required under the state guidelines to inspect certain facilities within a certain time period. Like, some of the smaller ones, we might go every five years, some of the big ones, we're going every three years. And then the property owners are actually required to look at them every year and make sure that they're still working. The smaller kind of facilities. But as Craig mentioned, they've been doing this in Tidewater, Richmond, Northern Virginia since the 90s.
90s, yeah.
We've been lucky to make it this far.
Other questions or comments, if you'd like to answer them, Board? Seeing no questions, I guess we'll close this public hearing and move on to the next. The second public hearing tonight is the rezoning request and special use permit Taylor Hollow Management. And I guess...
Ms. Bree's going to handle that for us tonight?
Entertain us tonight for a while, right?
I'm going to try.
Okay.
Good evening. As you stated, we're going to discuss the rezoning request from Montgomery County and Taylor Hollow Construction. The site is located at 4237 Prices Fork Road. Everyone commonly knows of it as the former Prices Fork Elementary School, and it is located in the Prices Fork Magisterial District. The request is to rezone approximately 3.3 acres from age 1 to traditional neighborhood development infield, and that is going to be commonly referred to as the front of the property where the existing school site is. And then the rezoning for the rear of the property is approximately five acres, and it is going to be, it's requested to be rezoned to residential multifamily. Together, the rezonings will allow multifamily development, residential and limited commercial uses. The applicant has also requested a special use permit in traditional neighborhood development infield to allow senior housing and a farm market. This is the vicinity map for the property, and the site is designated as a star here. You can see that in the northwest portion of the county, to the west of Blacksburg, east of the Radford Army Ammunition Plant. This is the aerial view of the property. The existing school building is here, and the ball fields lie back here. Here is Prices Fork Road. This is the comprehensive plan map for the property. Does lie within the village area of the 2025 comprehensive plan. It's further designated as mixed use in the Prices Fork Village Plan. This blue here is the new school site, so that's the current Prices Fork Elementary School, and it's designated as civic. There are three phases proposed for the construction. The first phase includes the renovation to the existing school building, and that will have senior housing units and small-scale, hopefully, community commercial uses. The second phase is the development of the five-acre portion of the property to include some multifamily. That would be built on market, excuse me, market demands. And then Phase 3 is a potential addition to the existing school building, which will include additional senior housing units. It should be noted that Phase 1 and 3 combined will not exceed 36 senior housing units, with Phase 1 having a minimum of 16. This is the concept plan for the property. Phase 1 is here, the existing school building, and you can see they are currently proposing to use the two existing entrances to the school, with additional new parking in the rear and the side of the property. This is the former kindergarten classroom that they have, state they would love to see a daycare facility in if they can make that happen. This is Phase 2 of the property, the existing ball fields. You'll see there's a very little detail here, if any at all. We'll get into that a little bit here as we go through the presentation, but they have shown the buffer yard around here to prevent impacts and mitigate impacts to adjoining property owners. Phase 3 includes this addition here. Some of the impacts we have identified, of course, transportation, even when we went through the village plan several years ago, we discussed the traffic along Prices Fork Road. Most of that traffic is due to people traveling between Radford and Blacksburg and vice versa. They have proposed to use the two existing entrances. VDOT has stated they may need to look at turn lanes, and they will need to file an exception request in order to maintain the two existing entrances. The one thing that we want to point out is the Prices Fork Village Plan calls for traffic calming in this area. Staff's perspective is, if we allow the installation of turn lanes, that is going to speed traffic up versus calming it in that area. There has been much talk in the past about a potential connector road or bypass along the backside of the Prices Fork Village. There are no plans at this point to construct that, only talk, so we do not know when that will happen. Mr. Neil Turner has reviewed the request. He did confirm there is a fire hydrant located at the property. He also discussed the existing entrances, and he said leaving them open would be preferred for emergency access. It allows fire and rescue to go through the property versus having to pull in and find a way to turn around and get back out. So it's much more ideal for emergency access. Bob Thunk with the PSA has confirmed that water and sewer will be available to the site. They did base that on maximum development potential for Phase 2, and there would be, need to be an extension to Phase 2. The applicant has proffered to have the entire development served by Public Service Security. Dan Baranato with Montgomery County Public Schools has stated this, schools, children in this area will attend Prices Fork Elementary, Blacksburg Middle, and Blacksburg High Schools. At most, it would add five students per grade level, and currently, those schools are below capacity, so they do not see a huge impact at this point. We've discussed the comprehensive plan a little bit. It is designated as village. Village areas are, as you know, planned for higher development density. They are also designated to consume one-third of the county growth, with the other two-thirds going to the towns of Christiansburg and Blacksburg. The Prices Fork Village Plan designates it as mixed use. Several goals and policies in the Prices Fork Village Plan are met by this request. We've pulled out just a couple for reference. The big one is the redevelopment of the existing school site, and the need for a variety of housing in the area, such as senior housing, potential multifamily housing, and then the use of universal design methods for aging in place. They have also met several of the design details. As we saw in the comprehensive plan, they are planning on putting new parking in the rear and to the side of the structure. And then they will also, they have several proffers related to pedestrian facilities and trail connections. Several community members have discussed the overall density, so I want to look at that a little bit closer. The overall gross density of the village is two dwelling units per acre, and that's for the entire village. And then on top of that, we have the historical village neighborhood, which this site lies within, and that's 1.2 dwelling units per acre. Currently, there's not been a lot of major residential development in Prices Fork very recently, since the comprehensive plan, so there is an abundance of vacant land, and the overall density will not be met with this request. In regards to historic village neighborhood, I used very rough calculations, using our GIS system, and physically counted houses, and added up acreage, and I am getting at maximum, with the maximum amount of allowable units under the request now. It would be approximately 1.3 dwelling units per acre at maximum build-out. The guidelines for net density of tract are not to exceed five dwelling units per net acre. However, there are some provisions in the comprehensive plan to allow for a higher density, and that's based on constraints of the site, or how well the policies of the village plan are met, and then, of course, mitigation of impacts on the development. It should also be noted that the historical village neighborhood section calls for higher net density to be located at the rear portions of the tracts. In summary, staff and the planning commission agreed that the proposed development meets goals and objectives of the Prices Fork Village Plan, and it does qualify for consideration of the zoning. The county did host a community meeting on April 23rd at the new Prices Fork Elementary School. We had approximately 24 people there. We had some supportive comments regarding the rehabilitation of the school site and inclusion of the school site into the historic district. And then we also had some concerns, of course, regarding traffic, lack of details regarding the property designated as R and 1. Several people were discussing about the need to have the entire property zoned, traditional neighborhood development infield, instead of having the split zoning of the parcel. And they were concerned about the development of the ball fields resulting in the loss of open space. And then they were also concerned about the potential commercial uses. They are very supportive of having community-supported commercial uses, such as a cafe, medical offices, that type of thing. However, they were concerned about, you know, different things that would not totally be related to the community. In response to that, Taylor Hollow has developed several proffers to address some of the concerns and to help ensure that the project will meet the goals of the Prices Fork Village Plan, and we'll go over those at the end of the presentation. Should also be noted that in regards to the residential multifamily versus traditional neighborhood development, staff looked at that and wanted to give you a comparison. 15% of the lot, if zoned residential multifamily, has to be dedicated for open space or active recreation area. There is not a requirement in traditional neighborhood development for that type of open space, so they do not have to allocate any of the site for open space. Maximum building lot coverage for residential multifamily is 40%. No more than 40% of the site can be covered by buildings. And traditional neighborhood development... In traditional neighborhood development infield, it's eighty-five percent. And it should also be noted that the new Prices Fork Elementary School is still located within the village, so they have gained open space with that new school site because it does offer more open space than the former site. The project was one of eight public-private development teams selected to go to the national design and receive national design assistance. Representatives from Taylor Hollow Construction attended that last week. I've heard very positive things and I think he has more to report when he does his presentation to you and possibly even some preliminary plans. The Department of Historical Resources held a meeting on May fourteenth at, in Prices Fork to discuss the inclusion of the elementary school within the Prices Fork Historical District. Several people were there to support it. Several voiced that they would like to see the entire site included, however, due to regulations on how the boundaries have to be drawn, I think we all come to the conclusion that was not possible. However, with inclusion of the school site, he can receive rehabilitation tax credits. In addition, the Virginia Department of Historic Resources will require that the facade, character and defining features of the school remain intact. On May fourteenth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and they recommended approval of the request by an eight to zero vote with Mr. Pat's accent. We had nine speakers that night, five who opposed, four were in support. There were concerns regarding traffic, lack of detailed plan for the proposed R and One development. However, most everyone there spoke in favor of the redevelopment of the former school structure and said they were happy with the plans for that site. These are the revised proffer statements that we have received from the applicant. I'm not going to read them to you. I will summarize them and then go into detail on the two that were changed from the Planning Commission recommendation. The first one's very simple about conforming to the concept plan that we discussed at the beginning of the presentation. Of course, the site will be served by PSA. A detailed site plan with ordinance shall be submitted and approved by the zoning administrator. That is very common. Stormwater management, as we've already heard about tonight, will be followed and they have proffered that certain uses will be prohibited such as a funeral home, cemetery, boarding or transition house, or a park and ride lot. So if they want to do any of those uses, they would have to come back before this board for approval. Number six is one that the Planning Commission discussed and the applicant has since offered a new proffer. And basically that says the applicant shall provide a trail connection at a mutually beneficial location on the eastern side of the property at the time a future trail system is identified and constructed by Montgomery County. We have the village transportation links plan in this area and it does show trails coming toward this property and connecting into this property. So the Planning Commission wanted to make sure that if that is ever developed, that not only would he have pedestrian facilities onsite, but he would connect into our village transportation links. Proffer number seven is a committal to work with Montgomery County and VDOT regarding pedestrian, bicycles, and vehicular traffic along Prices Fork Road if improvements are Number eight is another proffer that was revised. Basically, it just went to add detail to the bus shelter to make sure that what we had out there met the needs and complied with the village and wasn't something that we wouldn't necessarily not want to look at. It's a minimum of five by fourteen, constructed of durable, architecturally sound materials that withstand continual exposure to the elements. Shall be located at one of the proposed site entrances along the front of Prices Fork Road with specific site to be determined at a later date. The shelter shall be completed prior to any COs being issued in Phase Two if Phase Two is developed for any residential use other than senior housing or once the property is served by public transit, whichever occurs first. Number nine refers to the addition that is shown in Phase Three. Basically, it states that the architectural style of that addition will be complementary to the existing school building. Number ten discusses the structures in Phase Two. They will have a variety of finishes and be in keeping with the Prices Fork Village Plan principles. Number eleven talks about sustainable design features. Taylor Hollow has made it clear that they would like to have a walkable property. They want to have energy-efficient units and maximize the green space and limit the hard paved surfaces. Number twelve also refers to Phase Two. Prior to approval of a site plan, which is normally done administratively by the zoning administrator, it will be submitted to the Planning Commission for a work session so we can meet and discuss the site plan to make sure that it is in keeping with the principles of the Prices Fork Village Plan. And then number thirteen is they will investigate the opportunity to work for CDVG grants or home consortium funds for development to, in Phase Two. And the last one is very simple. Any daycare facility shall meet any federal, state, and local guidelines governing daycare facilities. And that is all I have for you this evening and I would welcome any questions you may have of me.
Mr. Gray?
Just one question and I want to see if this has been, anybody's even looked at. And that would be putting houses closer to the school itself and leaving the back of it more open, put maybe three houses per acre, excuse me, to the front of it and then maybe keep the back portion of it as a recreational field for not just this development, but for the whole community. I think you, the density is not so great that we couldn't do that and keep them with a ball field there.
Right. I'm not sure if he has looked into that, but I know he has some plan designs from his trip that he had last week and so he might be able to share some of that with you when he does his presentation.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Gray? We retain the right to recall you. Okay. Yeah, come on up. Here's the applicant.
I'm the he that was referred to so many times. My name's Joe Fortier. I'm with Taylor Hollow and I apparently had a lot of questions to answer, so. Last time I tried to speak, I couldn't because my mouth was dry in front of the planning board, so Marty and I only solved that with a simple trip. However, I may need to take a break.
That's a bigger bottle than you had at Planning Commission.
So this is a picture of the old Prices Fork Elementary School. There's a reason that this is the first slide up here and that is because in everything we've looked at and the people we've talked to in the comprehensive plan and the livability initiative that we tried to look at to put together our proposal, it has been stated that this is the, this is the heart of Prices Fork Village and all of the stuff we've read indicates a strong desire to preserve this building, which is why we put together our proposal in the first place. Unfortunately, right now, the building is sitting vacant and unused and the heart's not beating very strongly. It is not an easy trick to say in old school. It's not an easy trick to say in old school, Montgomery County. If you look at the last three properties that have been surplus by Montgomery County that have been schools, they have all been torn down. The, there's a community group, the Northwest Montgomery Village Community Foundation that has organized itself and I'm sure you'll hear from it from members one time. And they have been organized for years and have attempted to try to do something, put together a proposal for this school. They should know how difficult it is. They were not even able to do that yet. People want school saved, but people want the back to remain rural and open and ball fields. We're a private developer. We have a really big heart. We're very good. I don't know how to do this. So we can say this rule, this is what we do. We have saved more vacant buildings, historic buildings in New River Valley than any other company. We've done a nice job of it and I would like to thank you for your attention to this. We're trying to make this heart beat again, so. Thank you. Okay. So I don't know if any of you actually saw a hard copy of this. I thought I'd take a minute and remind us how we got to this point. I don't know. This is the original proposal that we submitted in response to the county's request for proposals for the school. In, the contract was reviewed by the county and then it was suggested to Mr. Meadows that he work out a contract with us, that they were interested in pursuing this. And in working out the contract, we were asked by the county staff to do the following things. Number one was to increase the purchase offer price that we did and to consider developing the back was the first thing we were asked to do. The second thing we were asked to do is to offer a clean contract with a minimum of unnecessary contingencies. The third thing was for a quick closure, something that wasn't going to drag out. And the fourth was to go through the rezoning that was necessary for the property all at one time and not try to do it in stages, so to ask for what was needed upfront. Mr. Meadows, did I characterize that correctly? Marty? Okay. So, I mean, it's my understanding that these conditions were come through for a good purpose given the other situations that we're not going to talk about that county has not itself enrolled in the schools. So that's what we were asked to do and that's what we did. Our current proposal has tried to do those things and taken into account as many of the community considerations as we can. So, you know, my understanding is that the county is interested in a fair purchase price. They're not interested in donating and they're interested in tax revenue to help keep taxes down for everyone in the county. Our current proposal is completely consistent with the contract that was worked out. There are no surprises in here that has been presented to the board in the past and signed by the county staff. You know, the planning staff, it's been a pleasure working with them and getting their recommendation. We had to go through a lot of proffers which were designed with the language of the planning staff and Marty, so when someone says, okay, a proffer is vague, this was all very carefully worked out to try to provide as much protection as we can without knowing exactly how it's going to unfold. And then we're very pleased to receive the planning board vote and what I'm just trying to point out is that our proposal is being consistent every step of the way. We have tried to do what we've been asked to do. Technology is not my strength here. So the reasons what we're trying to do in, why we're asking for your support, is to support this project in looking at the livability initiative and the comprehensive plan, which we took our direction from, here's what we're trying to do. Here are the ways that we think that this meets those, those plans really, really well. We saw the focus of development in the villages to preserve the open space and undeveloped land in the county. I think this does this by densifying, by putting housing together to develop mixed use, mixed income projects in areas with existing public infrastructure in an effort to preserve, again, the region's rural character. Again, I think this meets that. Supporting new housing options that meet the needs of an aging population. This was found, the livability initiative to be the biggest, one of the biggest single needs that we have with the growing senior population that we have. We just don't have enough good housing. Encouraging the use of historic cap tracks credits and supporting reuse and preservation buildings, that's what this is. Increasing energy efficiency, our company is all about it, energy efficiency. And I put the last one in, that was not in the plans, but to provide good value and revenue for the county. So this is not just a profit grab or an attempt to try to maximize value to us. Okay. Here's what we're trying to do. We're trying to save the old school and do a historical renovation that I think will look, it will look wonderful if we're going to be able to refresh it. We're trying to provide lifespan housing for people to age in place in the old school and in some of the units that we add. Mixed income housing for seniors so that there will be some for people who only make fifty to eighty percent of the MI so that they'll have a place to live. We're trying to do a viable community food service business off where the cafeteria and the kitchen and the stage used to be, that is a community food service business. I'll tell you more about that later. We're looking to do some onsite agriculture to support that business. We're going to try and see if we can expand it to be a place for culture and community events, both inside and outside. And we're going to work in as many energy efficiency and redesign features as we can. Cluster housing preserves the character and the open and the green space. So that's what we're trying to do. We've spent the last three days up in Washington DC with a very committed group of wonderful people at the Sustainable Cities Design Academy. You will hear some concerns and I understand these concerns about what the back will look like, about all the things, the worst things that could happen if this goes through. I do understand these concerns. We have spent the last three days about, kind of sixteen hours a day talking about and envisioning what the best could be, what really could be wonderful out there. And this is what we're aiming for. We have pages of good ideas that we're still debriefing on and I'll show you a few quick ones, but the whole idea is that when we do a project, we're trying to move up from the minimum design standards which are mandated by building code and by the zone and do better. Okay, so this will be a project that the county will be proud of and it will be sustainable on many levels. That's our goal. There's a reason our company was selected as the only project on the East Coast with Privacy Academy. That's because we believe in sustainability and it's what we practice, so. So a few quick ideas. Okay, I've been cautioned by everyone, first enough to put the slide up here. By being stubborn, which I am, I put up this, this is the concept slide. We are not proffering this. I can tell you only one thing, that this is exactly what will not happen. What I'm trying to show here with this slide is that there are forty units on this property. All the units are clustered together. There's actually a working farm around the outside and it's a way, it's a way of getting density without completely, these are all, I think they're thirteen hundred square feet, very low-impact housing, okay? When you live next to a ball field your whole life, it's hard to imagine that any density that is developed there is going to look good. However, if you hear about sixty units of town, model three bed and townhomes, it's not going to happen. Number one, we can't do it because the code that we're asking for only allows forty units of attached single family and second of all, we're going to do better than that. The maximum we've talked about in all forms and all conspiracies that we've done so far have been thirty-four units if we put in some smaller. So a mix of residential single family that's owned by the owners and maybe some more units for seniors if we want to be, so that's what we're talking about. Again, this is just a concept plan. This was done by a gentleman out of Houston and it's one of several things we've talked about, but it can work. One of the people on our project team was a foremost expert in doing community-based food service plans and there is a lot of energy about trying to do an incubator, community kitchen, cafe that takes local food and makes it available to, to the population. They encouraged us to expand our vision, so right now we're actually considering rather than having two commercial spaces, having one that's bigger, that has a bench space inside of it, that can have some music incorporated into it and really is a draw to get people out to the site. The feeling was is that this is one of those things that getting more things gets more people to come. So there's a lot of excitement about that. We're trying to make it beautiful. We're trying to involve the community. We're trying to get the big. These are some of the things, basically, that we were encouraged to incorporate into what once was a smaller idea, which could be, could be really exciting, so. Again, what we're trying for here is we're trying for something that will be vibrant and not just a business that holds down a commercial space, something to make the heart of the village beat again, so. We do have some support. I, a lot of the people who spoke for us are at the Community Foundation meeting tonight, but we do have wide support on this. And we have formed an advisory group that we meet with once a month to try to build features into this subdivision to incorporate the needs of the wider community. They include the council on aging, the farmer's market, the New River Planning District Commission and I was going to say Jessica Schultz just got a, helped get a grant for them to explore the aspects of this food-based initiative and help us work on that. It's very exciting. Virginia Community Capital, the Home Loan Consortium, and we have had a lot of interest from citizens. We've been asked by more people when this would be ready than any other project we've done by a factory of ten. So, I mean, clearly there's a need for the senior housing. So we, we started here, I'm finishing here. So we, we started here, I'm finishing here. I'm sure that you'll have people who are against this project. I'm sure some of you may have already gotten an earful. But, just to put it out there, if this rezoning request is denied, then we cannot fulfill the contract we are in with Montgomery County. If we cannot fulfill the contract, then we are no longer involved in the school, then the property sits vacant and becomes surplus property. The most likely result of that is that the property will be surplus and torn down. Then we have a vacant lot that gets auctioned. Then somebody else will be back here for a rezoning request without the school, without us, you know, if that progress were. So, we think this is a really good proposal. We do. You can't please all the people. We've worked really hard to design a project that works, not just for us, but for the community. We can save the school. We can help the heartbeat again. I'm asking for your support and yes, vote on this proposal.
Questions? Comments?
Just one, you indicated that at this point in time, the most units that you were, you could see going on there is 44. Are you willing to make that part of your proffer on the phase two or do you need more flexibility at this point in time still on phase two?
My concern is, is that we end up going, we have a lot of meetings to have to try to do a nice job on. The reason we don't have a proposal is we've been asked for a quick closing and there's a lot of work to do, to do a nice job. Okay? So, my concern is, is that we find out that there is a tremendous need for senior housing units which are much, much smaller. And that in fact, if we develop housing along those lines, that we could easily use those 60 units and still have less of an impact, for example, because senior units are small. They have less parking associated with them and they're typically, you know, 500, 700 square feet and that's all. So, we are asking for the flexibility if it's multifamily, multifamily is different for single family units for, for that to be left in there at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Oh, well, open it up for public comment. We've reserved the right to recall you. Open it up for public comment at this time and I have a couple people that signed up. But first, if you have a public comment, you have five minutes. Come to the microphone, state your name and address. And you have five minutes and address all your comments to the board. And the first person I have signed up is Michael Burke.
Thank you. My name is Michael Burke. I reside at 2931 Weatherly Court, that's Montgomery Farms, back behind Prices Fork. Got some long comments. Everybody's got a distributed copy. I really enjoyed the discussion during the practice and hope everything comes together as everybody visions. My comments are, in the spring and summer of 2005, Prices Fork Village Plans developed on Montgomery County Planning Commission with Doc and Paul. 2006 by the Board of Supervisors. Part of the process of planning commission met three times with Prices Fork Citizens Committee. I was a member of that committee and can attest to the vision laid out in that plan, which is known as PFVP 2025. A link to the adopted plan can be found on the Montgomery County website, which is provided in my document. Additional resources such as supplemental material and other maps as well can be found on that website. According to the Prices Fork Village Plan 2025, results from the three citizens meetings indicated key interest and part of the residents in, one, the history and historic preservation of Prices Fork, two, keeping the elementary school in or near the historic fork, and three, solving traffic problems playing the village. These interests are reflected in the plan, page 293. As new Prices Fork Elementary Schools were developing at that time, one of the charges of these meetings was to have a vision where a new Prices Fork Elementary could be located at the present site as on-suit. Unanimously, the working groups indicated that the field owned at that time by Virginia Tech is an ideal location for this setting school. I applaud Megan Dorsett and the Planning Commission and more importantly, the wisdom and leadership of Montgomery County Board of Supervisors to engineer the necessary exchanges of land to see this part of the vision to come to fruition. Thank you. This fulfilled one of the interests stated previously. Furthermore, four distinct regions in the greater Prices Fork region were identified for land use in this document. Historic village area, a new east village chamber along Merrimack Road, a new central village chamber between the new Prices Fork Elementary School and Merrimack Road and the outlined rural areas. The essence of these designations is that significant development would occur in the newly established neighborhoods and that the historic fork of the village would be preserved. Prices Fork is a traditional agricultural community founded in 1700s. Much of the core district was built between 1815 and 1814 and then several ways thereafter. Eleven structures in the historic forks were built prior to World War II and several in the mid 1800s. Structures include the Lutheran Church across the street from the old Prices Fork Elementary School, James V Price House and Price Store, to name but two. Designated Historic Village Area begins at the west edge of the new Prices Fork Elementary School and continues through the forest and includes the site of the old Prices Fork Elementary School. Much of this neighborhood was placed in the National Historic Register in 1991 as the Prices Fork Historic District. Since that time, the structures built after 1936, the original designation for the Historic District begun in 1986 and there has to be a 50-year period of time. Many of those structures built after 1936 can now be added to the register, including the old Prices Fork Elementary School. One of the benefits obviously of this registry is that there are federal and state tax credits for rehabilitation and preservation of these sites. The supplemental report to the PFVP 2025, which is available online, lays out the steps necessary to protect the Historic Village Area. I encourage everybody to read through that and expand the Central Village historical core. Preservation should be identified and the Prices Fork Plan is a goal for the village, which the supplemental material advised us to do. By establishing new modules for an expanded historic district to Prices Fork, adopting zoning ordinance language for historic preservation, adopt architectural review committee and create historic design guidelines to get the committee's work. These last three tasks, zoning language, design guidelines and review committee could be accomplished for Prices Fork specifically or could address historic preservation issues throughout the county. Prices Fork Village Plan 2025 did just that, identifying village and historic village core, which is the Prices Fork Historic District and the adjacent neighborhoods. To quote the report, "The village core represents the heart and soul of Prices Fork. As such, any development or renovation within established neighborhoods should be compatible with adjacent structure and the neighborhood as a whole. The scale, manning, colors and materials of the new building should be traditional and compatible with the village's historic architectural fabric. Given the role of vistas providing important historical context for the village core of Prices Fork, new development should not block scenic views or vistas particularly from public roadways. Careful sitting and design of new structures should be used to maintain open vistas from adjacent properties." Furthermore, the plan drew out policies for development of Prices Fork. These policies can be found in pages 304 to 312 of the PFVP 2025, specifically PFV 1.4, Land Use and Urban Design in the Historic Village Area. But include these policies as in hold in the distributed document and will pass on highlight in several as you can read those. The project as identified by the news release of December 17, 2013, for senior housing in front of PFVS Phase One appears to be within the scope of the vision defined by PFVP 2025. And the lot should be zoned for traditional neighborhood development.
I'm sorry, Mr. Burke, but your five minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next gentleman signed up is Mr. Bennett Teetz.
My name is Bennett Teetz. I live at 341 Lancaster Drive in Blacksburg. I have property that is contiguous to the property question. I think first it is important for you to know that I'm in general agreement with the direction of this project and with the developer. In fact, I think you have a letter in your packet dealing with some of the concerns and the details of the direction where we're going. I'd like to say thank you to Bree for her more, much more balanced presentation with regard to the density. She corrected some of that stuff that I've been asking about, so thank you, Bree, and thank you, Karen. Furthermore, gentlemen have presented some very interesting things here tonight that I have not seen before or heard before. And there's still some details, but nonetheless, it's the first details that we have had presented in regard to what could occur, what might occur in the back five acres in the Oriam One zoning. So, still, there's devil in the details and I have a few that I am concerned about and I hope you guys will be too. I'm going to enumerate four of them and I think some of them are already in the paper that you have in your packet. Number one, the proposed zoning is not in keeping with the comprehensive plan of Prices Forks. I think you saw the numbers that Bree presented. At 1.3, she's got a calculation for the historic neighborhood part of the historic district. So, you can find that in the village plan and I have the page number should you want to look it up. And I'm going to run out of time here, so I better hurry. I can get you the page number later. Secondly, in the back five acres, it's all residential and it's not an excuse. So, the comprehensive plan, it does call for an excuse, as I think Bree presented that, but the back five acres is all residential. So, I just point these things out for your consideration. Number two, there's no detail in what the developer in that has changed as of tonight. So, and what I saw presented was very attractive, but nonetheless, not enough detail and not enough planning in my opinion. So, there's no indication basically also of what the pricing of that property would be and whether it's even going to be rented or purchased property. And your my concern, maybe I'll play that out, I don't know. So, basically, I, I know it's a bit of a delay, but it seems to me that the details should be provided for the back five acres and that we can postpone approval of the zoning until such detail is presented. So that would be number two. Number three, to the best of my ability to determine, there are only about five proffers that address the back five acres out of the 13 that he has. It does allow for up to 60 units per acre, I mean, 12 units per acre for a total of 60 units. And once you pass the Oriam One, the horse is out of the barn. So, I see no reason why we need to rush into this, not the developer and working with the community with his advisory panel and whatever, but the government plan for the back five acres. And lastly, Mr. Meadows has spoken of the best and highest usage of the property. And I think the best and highest use is one where the county gets benefit and the community gets benefit. Where the county gets tax revenue and where the community gets some value from the property as well. So if we have to build houses, I would think the best tax revenue would come from more expensive homes, $250,000, where the people would be an asset to the community as opposed to a burden. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else in the audience would like to speak on this public hearing, you can come forward and address the board.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Shorter. I live at 4595 Longchuck Road in Blacksburg. And I almost missed it, I was hollering hay. So I apologize. The first thing I would say is, I would be in favor, and I think everybody's in favor of keeping the school, redoing the school, fixing it up, the senior house. And the question everybody has is what's going to happen in the backyard? The village plan that everybody worked on, that bailed out was like 1.2 houses per acre or something like that. And I know for the whole village, that totals up to more houses, but we don't think you got to squeeze them all on five acres and then have nothing anywhere else. And at the last, at the zoning meeting, there were some people speaking of different income standards and I think we've got enough low-income housing over on the other end of the Prices Fork Road down on 114 that we don't need to put that in Prices Fork. It was settled about 275 years ago and we've got by this long without it, so don't think we have to have it there. And as for two other things, one is developing the commercial space, there's no, I don't see where there's any parking space for much commercial development. I may be wrong. Plus, the access to the back section, and I haven't been out there at the tape measure, but I don't see how you could get a VDOT standard road through there. And about 12, 14 years ago, we passed ordinance in the county that we weren't going to develop anything that didn't, you couldn't have a VDOT standard road access to it. So, that's my two cents worth, but the front part of it is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shorter. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board?
Hi there. My name is Jessica Schultz. I currently reside at 401 Hunt Club, number 39A in Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm a part of this project in the capacity of coordinating the community-based food system, or the community-based food project. I'd be happy to speak about that. Mostly what I wanted to speak about is also my support for mixed income housing in the back. I'm a small business owner as well. I vent at the Blacksburg Farmers Market and it's in my opinion that there's not enough housing for people like me in Montgomery County. I graduated from Virginia Tech. I can't buy a $250,000 home. I'm still paying off student loans, but I'd like to own something and to become a bigger part of this community. And there's, I'm renting with college students who have parties and it's ridiculous every weekend. There's no place for me to rent from that would match my income. So I really strongly support a mixed income neighborhood in the back in regards to the community-based food business. I'd be happy to speak more about that. It's basically a space where food business entrepreneurs, they have an idea like myself, but not a lot of capital. I currently rent from a business in Blacksburg. I rent their kitchen when they close. I'm in there at 3:00 in the morning to bake for the farmers market. Arrangements like that are often full of a lot of headaches and this one has been, although I'm very appreciative of the business to use that space. But having a place, an incubator where small businesses could grow and could be nurtured and mentored, I think that's a strong need in the community. Another use for that space has been talked about as food processing. I currently coordinate another project with the Blacksburg Farmers Market and we've completed a survey of local farmers in the area. And the need for better infrastructure in regards to processing and distribution is a really, really strong need in this area. And so I think that would be a good use of the space too. That's all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or later about it.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board?
My name is Walter Johnson and I live at 4201 Prices Fork Road. And I am between a rock and a hard place. I've got a brand new school on the east side of me that architecture does not fit in with the old Prices Fork area. Prices Fork goes back to pre-revolutionary times. And on the other side, I have a house that, that's something that we got here tonight is 50 years old. My house is built in 1870, about 114 years old. I'm not, like I said, too, too concerned about having the historical area, because I am the historical area of Prices Fork for the time being coming on and I have no qualms with that. My wife is very much a historian for the local area here and probably some of you knew of it. But that's, that's history too. I'm glad to hear that they do want to make the Prices Fork School a senior habitat. Now, my question right now is, are you going to make the five acres in back a senior habitat also, or is this going to be mixed family? I haven't heard, haven't heard that or else I missed it in the process here at the scene. And I'm afraid if you have children, probably, because I did. And I'm afraid if you have children, because I do keep cows over a brand-new fencing, and I'm sure that they're going to crawl that fence, you know, to go chase cows, especially calves. So I'm not really concerned about that. Also, I have a road that dead-ends right into my driveway that I'm afraid even trying to put up a stoplight there, because about once a month, I have two, three tail-end crashes right in front of it, which leaves just about a block down in front of the school, you're probably going to have to have another stoplight put in down there, or something like they had on 114, those speed bombs or something like that to slow traffic down. But right now, we live on the Price's Fork Speedway, and no hit the answer bus about that. The speed limit's supposed to be 35, it's 45 and 50 on most people in there. I paid my mailbox, it destroyed about three times already from being right there on the sidewalk. When the highway went through and was left widened in Price's Fork, there's no way that any more widening can be done. But the engineer, bless his heart, told me, said, "You've got stores, they're sitting right there in front. Can you leave those doors going outside?" And I was like, "Yes, I could." So I said, "Scratch my head and come back." I have a drawing that I think two inches in front of the building. He comes out, goes around the steps, and then out and down the fence line. So that's where the easement comes on down. My other question is, you've got water coming from the arsenal at this time, which is a power plug out in the front, and we're on the water system. What's the sewer doing in my property, if we need to develop it, for housing down the line or anything like that here several years ago, because they had to pump it out and put a new sewer line right down to the middle of the place? I stand foot even, and I wonder what's going to happen for a new sewer line there. I told him, if you put sewer line in, you're going 180 degrees away from the sewer plant. The sewer plant is west of the Price's Fork area, which they went across and into the tech land and down into Montgomery Acres with that. I'm kind of concerned about that. A three-story building, I do not think I'm too happy with having those type of housing units overlooking, but I'd like to think, keep some cows in there, keep the weeds and the brush down in my area. So I'm afraid that's my main concern, so I'm at that one.
Thank you. Is it anyone else?
Good evening. Steve Simmons with Volts and Associates. We're the design-
No, go ahead. I think she'll be after you.
Okay. We're the design consultants, helping tailor high-level of the project. There were just a couple of things I wanted to hear some more as far as some of the residents out there, and some more of their concerns, and try to address those, as we heard from them at the planning commission as well. There are just a couple of points, and Bree and Joe did a great job. Marty said after the planning commission, he'd never heard me talk so little at one of these meetings, but it's an exciting project, and I really believe the values and what this project brings to this community really speak for itself. But there were a couple of things. One, to address Mr. Shorter's comments a few minutes ago, we have looked at it from a site plan standpoint, to be sure that commercial uses that we're showing in Phase 1 do have enough adequate parking by county standards, and that the access road we have shown to the back five acres doesn't meet county standards as well from a development standpoint. As we looked at this project, and even before I was involved, the conversation as far as the zoning itself for the back piece, whether it be TND or RM1, and Bree brought this up in her presentation, I think it's important to touch on one more time. It's not necessarily just the flexibility of what the RM1 allows for, from a development standpoint and a density standpoint, the 60 acres and the 48 or the 44 or the 40, but as Bree said, the protections that are automatically put in for neighbors and the landowners out there, based on that existing, based on that zoning designation itself. She said maximum block coverage of 40%, that's two of the five acres, that's the most that could ever handle a building or a structure on them. The green spaces is called out as 15%. The max percivious area, which is your buildings and your parking lots and your sidewalk, is a maximum of 60%. So no matter what, there's still two of those five acres that will never have to pay, that don't have any buildings on them. There are all these setbacks that are built into that, and buffer yards between these potential uses and the adjacent neighbors. So I think it's important, and it's not just a density standpoint, it's the overall benefit to not just the property we're talking about tonight, but some of the intrinsic protection that it has for some of the neighbors. We have looked at VDOT, a slide over there about the potential traffic improvements we're working through, some of those with VDOT. Spoke with Mr. Burton tonight. I'll have to get that finalized up in the next couple of weeks, apparently, with him on that. We've had good conversations with the Blacksburg Transit and Radford Transit for a potential bus service out to this area over the last couple of weeks. And I do want to take one comment and be sure that the board supervisors understands. The housing, from what I understand from working with Joe and working with the county on this, this is housing for regular people. You know, the attention on the back, it's not Section 8 subsidized, and to say it's a burden on the county to provide housing for folks that make medium wage, you know, not everybody's, as the lady that spoke earlier, can afford a $250,000 or $300,000 house in Price's Fork. So I think we look at the values of what are spoken to within the Price's Fork village plan, the senior housing, the different income levels, I think that's a very important part of what this project brings to it. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. And Pat, answer any questions from an engineering or a site plan standpoint you may have. Thank you.
I live at 1858 Oatlewell Road. I also own the property across the street from the old elementary school at 4268 Price's Fork. You probably recognize it as the old farmhouse that needs restoring, as well as the old general store that was built in 1900. So I actually have a vision for a general store across the street, just not there in the development stages. I'm trying to keep it standing first. I'm here tonight because I wanted to talk to you a little bit about something my two-and-a-half-year-old has been saying lately. He says, "But why?" Every time. I tell him something, he'll ask the question, "But why, Mom?" And I was thinking about that. We've talked a lot about what and how, what we're going to do, how we're going to get there, but the underlying "but why" is what I have a question about. Mr. Foye, you understand his why. He wants to save the heart of the community. So you can feel like what his why is and why he's doing all of this for Price's Fork. And I think that's really commendable for him to do that, because we could just have an open space or a double-dose building. But I want to understand the county's why for the restrictions on the fast turnaround for the contract, the increase in price, the need for development, and the zoning in all one fell swoop. So I want to get to what the county why is there, and is it the right reason? You know, is Price's Fork the place that you need to make your why, your money? Is that the place? So that's one thing I'd like you to think about, is why we're at this point, why he feels like he needs to provide some zoning requests without a plan. And it's really a response to a requirement from the county. And the other thing I wanted to bring up was that, I want to pass this around, if it's okay, or I can just hold it here. This is a picture of, just share it. So if you pass that around, it's a picture of a farmhouse. And that farmhouse was the farmhouse that was standing where the old elementary school was before they built it. And it was because of the need for the community that the Price family sold that land to the county so that they could build a new school for the community. So it was cooperation between community members and the county coming together and serving the need. They'd grown out of the school across the street. They had a lunchroom in that house. The principal lived there. First and second grade was operated out of that room. And my great-grandfather gave or sold the land behind the school, the five acres that we're talking about. And so if it's my great-grandfather, then you know that it probably is related to half the people in Price's Fork, because we just are all related. So you can see the "but why" for us. Why are we talking to you about these five acres? It's more than just, you know, landscape. It's about, you know, our history, our cooperation with the county, working together, living together, and trying to make the best decisions for the people and the community. So I want you to consider about why, and if it comes down to, you know, doing the decision of the zoning, then I'd want the county to think about some considerations for the community. We have a lot of historic buildings right there in the district. Can you have provisions for funding to restore those? Can you make a trailway in the front so that the whole historic district is connected, and you actually have a nice community to drive through instead of just a pass-through? Can we work on calming the traffic and actually doing something about it? So, you know, if we need this development, then let's get back to the community and do things to really create this village plan that we were considering. So that's what I'd like for you to consider tonight. And also, preservation is about not just saving the building, it's saving a context of a community. It's preserving the present for the future. It's not preserving the past. It's for what we have here now and how we want to grow it for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it anyone else who would like to address the board on this subject? Okay. Mr. Jones?
I'm J.D. Jones of Blacksburg. I really don't have that much interest in Price's Fork, but I married to Price's Fork, I do. The one thing I've heard tonight that kind of concerns me, so, if you rezone it, and the proffer said that the final design will be reviewed and commented on by the planning commission, that has absolutely no power to it. I mean, they could say, "I don't like it." You've already rezoned it, and the developer can do what's in your zoning ordinance by right, because you've already rezoned it. So I don't think that proffer holds a whole lot of water when it says it be reviewed and commented on by the planning commission. That's really my only comment. You know, like I say, because of my wife, I have a little interest. If that proffer had been more stronger and said it would be approved by the planning commission or by you folks, it would have a whole lot more power. But once you rezoned it, to me, they can do your zoning ordinance by right, although the planning commission doesn't like it. The horse is out of the barn. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it anyone else who would like to come and speak on this public hearing? Saying no other, no others come forward, I will ask, is it any comments or questions from, oh?
Sorry, I'm not sure what you said.
Okay. Well, I think I will close, I will close this public hearing, and we will move on to the next one. That's ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance, Section 10-21, 10-48, 10-61, and I think this is one on removal or filling of dirt.
Mr. Chair, we'd ask that the board go ahead and continue this public hearing to the July 9th meeting. And the reason for that is this ordinance, proposed ordinance is still in the planning commission. It needs a little work within the commission, and probably changing to a certain extent before it comes to you at all. And so in order to give us a little bit of time to work with the planning commission, we'd ask that you continue this public hearing to the 9th. I'd first say to make sure there's nobody here to speak on it. No one spoke on the planning commission.
No one's signed up for it, and, but if it's anyone here on the, that need to speak on the ordinance amendment, Section 10-21, 10-48, and 10-61, removal or filling of clean field dirt, they have an opportunity to speak at this time. Saying no one.
So we'll continue the public hearing until July 9th.
Okay, so July 19th, they'll still have an opportunity to speak.
July 9th.
Yes.
I think that's the right one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's July 19th, right?
July 9th.
I mean, July 9th. I'm looking at July 9th on my pad, but, you know, there it is. Okay, so that one's continued. Number four, public hearing number four, ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance, Section 10-31 and 10-61, this is the one of, like, give me all. Go ahead, Darren.
Darren, before you get, just to go back, we were kicking around July 9th, it's actually July 14th. That's the first board meeting in July.
Okay.
Yeah, the first meeting in June is the night. That's where that was coming from.
So tonight, we'll be discussing some proposed ordinance amendments involving contractor-service establishments. This came about because a citizen had originally inquired with the planning department about constructing one of these uses in the manufacturing light or ML zoning district. At that time, staff did some research and realized it's not allowed in that district. However, it is allowed in both business districts by special use permit and in manufacturing or M1 by right, so it makes sense, along with that, that we might look at including that contractor service establishment in some manner in the manufacturing light district. As you all might recall, the board did request in March that the planning commission look into this and potentially consider adding the use as a by-right use in manufacturing light. Just to give you a brief background on this topic, there are two contractor service establishments that have been approved under this use by special use permit in the general business district in the county, one on Ferguson Drive in the Blacksburg area, and one on South Main near Christiansburg. That second one has been discontinued as of earlier this year. But to give you some idea of what we're looking at, a contractor service establishment, this is the location on Ferguson Drive, and you can see that it doesn't have any associated outdoor storage. It's a very clean, neat look to the site. And we'll contrast that with, this is one of the approved contractor's storage yards in the county, which is a related but separate use, where we get these large amounts of outdoor storage and materials and equipment. During our planning commission meeting, this was an area of major discussion, because our commissioners brought up some good points, that there might be some middle ground between, we may not want to see these large storage yards by right in those manufacturing light districts, but there may be some compromise where you may have a service establishment that needs some outdoor storage of one or two pieces of machinery or something like that. So you'll see in our proposed ordinance amendments later how we've addressed those issues. To give you a brief background on ML or manufacturing light, these are areas where we're looking for that mix of very light industrial and business uses that should have limited impacts on any surrounding zoning districts. Some similar uses that we allow currently by right in ML includes things like retail, offices, equipment sales, and some small-scale manufacturing. So a service establishment would be sort of a similar or related use to those. There are only two ML zoning districts currently in the county. One of those is located in the Plum Creek area. It's made up of nine contiguous lots. Actually, the citizen who have requested that we look at this ordinance amendment, if this is passed, would look to put his business in this location. And there is one other manufacturing light zoning district in the county, just outside of the town of Christiansburg on Cinnabar. So per this discussion, the planning commission did take action on our meeting today, 21st, by a vote of seven to zero. They made the recommendation that you approve the addition of contractor service establishment as a use allowed by right in the manufacturing light zoning district. They also recommended that outdoor storage may be allowed in certain circumstances related to these uses, and might be allowed under special use permit. And with that, they sort of deferred to staff to come up with some language that would address that special use permit section of that in number two. So based on some guidance from the county attorney, this is what we're looking at tonight, our revised amendments. Those will be the ones that are- Those will be the ones that are dated May 23rd that were in your packet. The first of those is to add that contractor service establishment to those by right uses in ML. It would also modify the existing definition of contractor service establishment to clarify that that use is not intended to allow outdoor storage. However, the section that goes along with that would be to add and define a new use that would be contractor service establishment with permitted outdoor storage of equipment and/or materials. So this would be the proposed modification to that first definition of contractor service establishment. The addition is that the outdoor storage of equipment and/or materials shall be prohibited in the contractor service establishment. But it would also allow the addition of a second definition of contractor service establishment with permitted outdoor storage of equipment or materials, which is defined the same, except you'll see in the last sentence that outdoor storage of equipment and/or materials is permitted. This would be allowed by special use permit only in M1 and ML, which are our manufacturing light and our standard manufacturing zoning district. And that would allow this board to ensure that the amount of outdoor storage is permissive with the use that's proposed. So with that, those are the ordinance amendments that are proposed tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, comments, whatever? Thank you. Oh, just got, yeah.
See if we can put this on tonight, so we can vote on this. The gentleman had been trying to get this for two months now, and I went over and visited. He owns a storage place where he wants to put this at. Real nice, I mean, he keeps it up nice. He owns it. Let me get this right now, a manufactured home estate in Plum Creek area, nicest one I've seen. I mean, takes care of his stuff, and he's really been trying to get this through. So I'd like to see if we couldn't go ahead and vote on this tonight. So he has two tenants that wants to move in there, but he don't have the building to put them. And I'd like to see us go ahead and vote on it tonight so he can get started on it.
Because we need a, I guess, when we come out of work session, we'll need a motion to put it on the addendum.
Yeah, when we get.
And I would agree with that. I still want to see if there's any public comment.
Oh, yeah.
And it's been our typical policy, if there's somebody that speaks out against it, we wait. But otherwise, I wouldn't have any problem.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Aaron? Okay, hey, for a while, we retain the right to recall you, okay? Okay. We're going to open it up for public comment at this particular time. If you want to speak on this public hearing, you have five minutes. Come to the podium, state your name and address. I have Doug Cardiman signed up.
Hi, I'm Doug Cardiman. I'm the owner of Rattle Lead and Light, that's for Small Business Center. And I would like for the board supervisor to consider voting on this tonight. There is a big demand for small business. There's small businesses about the state of Virginia and all over the United States. And when you have a small business that's working out of a basement and they want to expand and go to a small building with an office, and then you're tied, your hands are tied because it's not in a light industrial area, it makes it hard. And I would like for you guys to consider going ahead and getting this approved so we can move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else who would like to address the board? Not, we're going to close this public hearing, and we're going to take about a five or six-minute break before we proceed further. I think we need to resume our meeting. And now, fifth public hearing for the night, it's a special use permit, City of Rapid Telecommunications Tower, a request by the City of Radford, with special use permit on approximately 100 acres in an agricultural A1 zoning district to allow a 199-foot monopole telecommunications tower. Okay. We, before we get started, we remain the right to call you back.
Yes, sir. I would want to let that, sir.
Okay.
I usually thought I talked loud enough, but I'll make sure you can hear me. So the property owners of City of Radford, the agents of Verizon Wireless, and they're asking for a special use permit to allow a 199-foot monopole telecommunications tower that is including a four-foot lightning rod. The address is 54A Peterson Drive. The site's about 100 acres, site, and it is owned agricultural A1. I'm going to try to move a little quicker here. It looks like you're going to be here for a while yet. This is a map that shows the location outlined in this blue here of the city's property. It's located just south of I-81, which runs in this direction here, and this is interchange there at exit 105, and that's just as you begin to cross the river, head south. So the next slide is an aerial photograph of the site as well. You'll notice, and you'll see some photographs later, let me draw your attention to the fact that you come in off of Little River Dam Road up Peterson Drive, which becomes a private at a certain point here, and enters into the Radford property here. So pay attention to this little clearing in this location, that'll help you focus on the photographs later. And then the tower site is in this area where those icons are located. And the comprehensive plan map designates this property as rural. Now, here we go, a couple photographs. In that area, there's a little turnaround that I showed you on the aerial photograph before. This is a picture sitting from that location. And the proposed right-of-way will be headed right up this direction here, and that's toward the interstate. And we give you a picture of the state area for the tower there, and you can see the topography and the few trees and so forth that's surrounding the site. And as we were leaving the tower site, I took this photograph headed back down the hill. There's the states in the center of the access easement there. Remember this photograph for a little bit of discussion later? This is an AP pole on the City of Radford property, and it's right there beside of the access drive that's already established on the city's property. Okay, so we have some impacts. The lease area will be 100 by 100 feet. The fence compound will be 70 by 70 feet. Each, some of you have seen this before. The 12-foot wide gravel access road to be constructed is within a 20-foot access easement. And as I said before, this is all associated with a, it's basically a 195-foot monopole with an attachment of a four-foot lightning rod. I'll tell you right now, we usually shorten these presentations for the board, this is a little lengthier because there may be some of you have not seen the towers before. I want to help you make a good decision or educate you a little bit in case you have some questions. Okay, so transportation issues, we think there'd only be about one trip per month to the site after the construction's completed. The access is through a private entrance there off of Frontage Road, Peterson Drive. And B-Doc has reviewed this request and found it not to be a problem with their proposed I-81 New River Bridge interchange project coming up in the near future. This proposal should have no impact on infrastructure, neither water or source required for the project. It should also have no impact on the school system since there won't be an occupancy there. Noise and light should not be a problem as well. Basically, your noise will be from the occasional generator that kicks on if the power's out to serve the site, and then maybe your air cooling units may make a little noise. No lighting will be mounted on the tower unless the FAA requires it, and they typically do not as long as the tower is 199 feet or less. So the applicant gave us a copy of the Federal Airways and Airspace Summary Report and determined that notice to the FAA is not required for what they're planning to do. I talked with the directors of both the Virginia Tech Airport and the New River Valley Airport, and they both have no problems with the site as it's proposed. Couldn't find any historical structures of any significance in the area, and I've already gone over the access easement and the requirements there. Erosion semi-control, basically when you review what they're trying to accomplish, the plan indicates an area of 20,000 square feet will be disturbed in building that access in the compound, so that does require an erosion semi-control permit to be issued. One other thing we found was a little surprising to me, there were Radford Mountain bike trails located on the site. Found a map in the office, shock, that was prepared in 2008 by the city engineer, and I called him to talk about it. He indicated to me, assured me there was no recorded easements for those trails. They are designated, and I actually saw a sign for one of them up there on site while we were doing a site visit. But he says that the bicycle group has disbanded since then and no real interest in maintaining the trails. However, they do have an occasional biker that requests a permit to go up there and ride. The city does use this property for some unofficial recycling, including a composting operation. I felt like that this proposed tower would not affect the use of the site either for composting or the biking. So the comprehensive plan, as I said before, designates the area as rural. Usually, we, the comp plan also requires the applicant to do a severe study of the opportunities for co-location around the area to solve their antenna needs prior to coming in to ask them for a new tower build. This can be on tall buildings, it can be, antennas can be co-located on water tanks, church steeples, all kinds of things that you can place antennas on to receive cellular telephone signals and provide the location, basically, to get this information to and from. So the comprehensive plan also says, I'll point out here in the red, that newly constructed towers should be built in locations that will provide the least negative impact to the citizens of each jurisdiction. And we encourage the use of the monopole towers, and that's what they've asked for for the new sites that require new builds. The site is a location E, and it's about mid-range of what we ask for as far as location of towers. We don't want them on the ridge tops and that sort of thing. So they're about midway there. Their request is based on their Verizon's desire to increase their network coverage for I interstate A1, also to increase the coverage for nearby secondary roads and emergency responders, business operations, and other residents in the area. So the new tower will be used by Verizon and be available possibly by, to be used by three additional cellular providers. They have agreed to allow Montgomery County Emergency Services, so the City of Radford Emergency Services, to use A position on the tower. They had proposed initially a galvanized steel finish, and we changed that, and there would be a nine-foot chain link fence around the compound. In January, a balloon test was encouraged and conducted to demonstrate the location, and you'll see a photograph or two as a result of that, right here. So here's, the background is an aerial photography of the site again, if you'll notice this turnaround here on site. I was parked about in that area, the balloon, the tower site is here, and I took this shot from the parking area there, and the balloon is in the circle here, if you can't see it. This was another shot I took a little further back that shows the balloons pretty far up They felt like that the balloon was fairly well representative of the 199 feet, and that was pretty well confirmed by our GIS manager. So we have some view shed issues to deal with. The overall 199-foot height of the proposed tower and the lightning rod, we felt as staff would have a serious impact on the view shed, and especially when you combine that with the lack of use of flush mount antennas, most everything, you folks who've been on the board for a while, everything you've seen has been a flush mount antenna. And the proposal is not that, it's a platform antenna mount in this case. The platform is about 14 and a half feet wide that would sit on top of that tower. Reflectivity was an issue as well, but like I said, they have agreed to paint the tower now, and that will reduce the reflectivity. Sometimes the sun catches those galvanized poles in a real serious way and produce a real strong glow for a while. But we've noticed that the non-reflective matte brown paint works well, and it blends in well with the trees too. So education for some of the folks, we have, we have a requirement to use the monopoles for the towers, and if you can see, well, this is a monopole here on the right, and this is also one on the left. The difference is the type of antennas. This is a flush mount antenna on the left here, and what that means is we allow them to locate antennas from the outer point, outer face of the tower, the added antenna cannot exceed 12 inches. So it's hugged in pretty tight around the pole there. On the right, we have a T-bar or a TR mount on the monopole, and you can see that it is in a triangular shape, but each side of the triangle basically has like four antennas mounted to it. So you can get more antennas mounted. It just broadens the visual impact. So here is a little drawing that shows you an up-close view of the tower. This center part is the tower with the flush mount antennas attached to it. And this one is the same pole here, the pole's in the center, and the T-arms are here, and then your antennas are on the face of the T right there. So you've got four antennas on each of the three T-arms. Now, one more. So this one shows a combination of types of antennas. The top and the bottom are basically the T-arm style, which is this one that we looked at. The center two co-locations are the, the types of mounting, the platform mounting that Verizon is requiring, is asking for. So you can see here, you see the little grid pattern here? Basically, that's constructed in a way that someone could get around and walk up there, and I admit it probably is a safer thing, but, but it also is more visible, in my opinion, because of the mesh and of the, the design of it. But you can see the difference between these towers that are allowed to co-locate antennas that are 14 and a half feet wide besides the flush mount, the 12 inches. Okay, so here we go. The tower that Verizon has proposed, 199 feet for the pole, four feet for the lightning rod, 14 and a half feet for the platform mount. They are showing you that Verizon will be on the top location, and there's three location opportunities below. There may be more than that when you do the work to evaluate it. I suggested a landscaping screen around the compound to provide for screening of that ground equipment, to hide that in case the city does develop the site later. If we plant the screening now, it'll be screened in a few years, and if they do decide to develop. You received in your packet this map here, and you may not understand what that is, the printing is a little small on it, but basically it was a map that was provided to Verizon to indicate their search ring, which is in the lighter color here, and you can see the interstate running through. Here is, if you can see my mouse, there is the exit right there. Here's the proposed Verizon site. All these other little group of words here is basically a site, a tower, a co-location opportunity, a water tank or something that's in the area there that could be evaluated. And we did require them to evaluate several of those. So we're going to give you a real quick view shed analysis prepared by the county GIS department based on some software that we have that can evaluate line of sight information. So... So the applicant said that basically, this is a line of sight type of project here, if the tower antennas can see each other, they can transmit what's needed for us to talk on those cell phones. So basically, we're going to start here at 100, excuse me, at a zero feet, well, at round level at 20, 30.6 foot elevation that they gave us in their application. And you'll, I'm going to go a little bit fast, you had this in your packet, but you're going to notice that the areas here in the light cannot be seen. And you'll notice that there's very minute, minute changes until we get on up fairly high on the tower, and I'm going to go pretty quick. So this is the change when we go to a tower height of only 80 feet. You see how much that reduced, how these lighter spaces just went away pretty quick. And you're going to change very little as we go to 90, 100, 110, 20, 30, 40, 50. And you see, it's almost gone. So the line of sight right through there is pretty good. You know, you have this little area over here, but that, you can't fix that, basically, even if you go to 199. So this information is invited by our GIS department, using a lot of our data, and a software package we have is how we evaluate that. So 170, 80, 90, 199. And see, basically, it's right over here, and you can't see it 199, you still can't see it. Okay. So we discussed co-location requirements with the applicant, they addressed those. We, as staff, also contacted AEP about those towers that were on the Radford City site. We did get enough information from AEP to evaluate that using our data, and figured out pretty fast that with the co-location requirements allowed by state code, which is only a 20-foot increase in height without coming to you all for a special use permit, they could not get the coverage they needed to make this work. So we put that out of our mind, and we don't worry about those AEP towers right now. So basically, the planning commission had a meeting on May 14th, they heard the request and tabled action to allow Verizon to give us some more information. They had proposed some revisions to our conditions, they had done that late the night before, and we had not had a chance to review those. They, we wanted, the commission wanted to review the tower height and affect the proposed 14 and a half foot platform mounted antennas. They wanted additional coverage maps, propagation maps, and to provide a picture of the platform array. So last week, May 21st, the commission discussed the application again. And Jeff Geiger, who's here in the audience this evening, is the attorney for Verizon Wireless, and they indicated at last week's meeting that they could meet their coverage objective with a modified flush mount antenna, which is what staff had proposed, not 12 inches from this pole, but 24 inches. So we gave them a couple of extra feet there. They could do that at 150 feet, not, you know, it didn't have to be 199. Now, what he suggested is that if there's other co-locators or other areas that need service, there might be a need for another tower. What staff has felt, and what's been the policy of the board for years, is to follow our comprehensive plan, approve something so that we all have coverage, but with the least impact on the view shed and the neighbors. Now, there's not many, very many residential neighbors in this area, they've chosen a good site as far as that goes, but there's an awful lot of people traveling down Main Interstate every day, and it's a fairly scenic area as you travel there across the river. So there was a vote with the planning commission, six to one, with two members absent. And what you're going to see, presented to you in a couple of minutes, is a real change to the county's policy on previously approved towers. Chair Rice felt like that the proposed tower at 199 feet, without the use of flush mount antennas, is inconsistent with the county's comprehensive plan and the telecommunication tower policy. There were some other commissioners who felt that one tall tower with those big arrays on there, to allow for maximum co-location all the way up to 199, was better than multiple short towers to accomplish the same coverage objective. So it just all depends on what you as a board want to pursue at this point. If you want that shorter tower, more of them, possibly, or the taller tower with bigger antennas. Okay, so on a motion by Mr. Crowell, seconded by Mr. Long, carried by six to one vote, with Mr. Rice opposed, and Mr. Donahue, Ms. Disney absent, the commission recommended approval of requests with the following revised proper, proffered conditions. I am not going to read verbatim every condition. What I'm going to try to do is highlight and read here for you that, what was changed. So the tower height went from staff recommendation of 150 feet to 199. We increased the elevation by a couple of feet right there, because they haven't done their engineering to know exactly what that was going to be, so they didn't want to have to come back. The substantial conformance with the concept plan that was presented would be required, a site plan would be required if you all approve the plan, just like we've always done. It has to come through meeting to be reviewed. They will be using the existing Peterson Drive to access the site, 12-foot wide gravel access road. Here's another change in number five. There will be a monopole tower painted brown, they've agreed to paint it brown, umbrage. Typically, we require all the wiring inside the pole. The requested change would be, to the point, there is no more room for wiring inside the pole, they wanted to be able to put the wiring on the outside, and then they agreed to paint the wiring as well, to try to camouflage it. So should not take down any vegetation beyond just exactly what's necessary to create the compound and the access road, the plans, and should be signed and sealed by a licensed engineer in Virginia. Here we go, another change on number eight. Any satellite dish, microwave dish antennas attached to the telecommunication tower pole shall not exceed six feet in diameter and shall be painted matte brown with no logos. But, and my apologies to Mr. Geiger, this is what was added today, because we figured out there was something missing from this one. But dishes are allowed on the tower pole only as long as there's no fiber optic utility line located adjacent to the property. What Verizon is saying is, they don't know, but feel pretty sure that there's no fiber available to the site. They will ask for it to be made available and have an attempt to get proposals to do so, but if they can't get fiber, they have to put a dish. Our previous policy and previous conditions on other towers has said no microwave dishes or satellite dishes above the tree line. That's the difference. These will be allowed with this recommendation from the commission to go up the pole as high as they need to go, at six foot in diameter. We've required landscaping, that we've always, that is typical of other approvals, and they've agreed to do that. They'll meet the regulations found in section 1048 of the county ordinance. And any backup generator should not be fueled by a liquid fuel source. We use the, all applications we've seen the last several years, they've used propane generators. So, a couple of other things. Police, fire, and rescue services will be allowed to co-locate there, and there will be a no rent license agreement, with some conditions about how we respond. And that was where Planning Director had an idea that we should add 14 business days after, the county administrator would have to respond within 14 business days and be notified by certified mail that Verizon has another application to go on that tower. If the county administrator doesn't respond within the 14 days, saying the county wants to occupy that spot, Verizon can rent it to their next customer, and we will slide down a notch on the pole, as long as there's space available. So I know that Mr. Geiger has a presentation and some comments to make to you this evening, and I would say to the audience that the action date for this is now planned to be June 9th, unless something else is done here this evening. So I will attempt to answer questions you have for me, and then the applicant will make his presentation.
Questions?
A couple of things. I don't know if this board at this point in time wants me to report back, as part of the planning commission. This was debated for probably at least two hours, probably.
Close.
The other night, and I'm happy to report back, I don't know if you want to wait until after the Verizon's presentation, or if you want me to do that now, but I have.
Probably want to wait.
Okay. I just have some points, the planning commission asked me to raise, she recovered most of them, but I said that I would also do that.
Okay, any questions on this side? Mary?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, the present planning commission members, when is the last time they had a tower request? Have they ever had a tower?
We probably have three or four commissioners who may not have ever seen a tower application request since they've been appointed to the commission. I think the Harding Road Tower was the last one applied for, and that was withdrawn.
Were they familiar with the policy that had been in place?
I had at least one commissioner come to me after the meeting was over and say, ooh, I didn't understand. He was absent the week before, and he said, he didn't understand about that, and had missed that part. So there was some lack of education on some of their parts, just by not ever having seen a tower application before.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. King?
I got just a couple of them. The presentation you had shown 160-foot out, and then you said, if I'm not mistaken, 190, 191, made no difference in the pickup?
What we saw when you came down from 199 to 150 was very little difference, there was sun. But Verizon says they can meet the coverage objective at 150 feet. What you're doing is eliminating the number of co-locators that you potentially could have on the tower. And their spacing generally is like 10 feet between each section of antenna mounts. So for every 10 feet, you can get another co-location usually. Now, there's some, there's some more equipment needed coming online now for all the data people are pulling down through their cell phones. So that's creating a little bit of an issue as far as the need for more antennas.
Now, did, on their, the platform, was it two foot, and then comes out 14 foot?
You've got the tower that comes up, and then the platform array, it comes out and sits on top at 14 and a half feet diameter, width there, excuse me.
So is there any difference in the pickup on them? Or was that?
They can get, if it's a triangular platform there, they can get 12 antennas mounted on that one space. If you cause them to use the flush mount antennas that we, or the modified flush that we suggested, they're going to take a couple of slots on the tower themselves to get their data in and out, the way they need to do it, so that they have a proper reception. So it'll just take up more opportunity there, and you'll have less providers on the tower.
Okay, now, I talked to the gentleman from Verizon here the other night, and was it them that changed from 150 to 199, or?
It was a discussion that was had during the planning commission meeting, like Mr. Tuck said. It was a long discussion, and the, some of the commission members felt like they would rather see one 199-foot pole with many 14 and a half foot tower, I mean, tower mounts on it, rather than the shorter poles that were, that we generally tried to deal with with the policy, with flush mounts on it. Now, you know, I have seen cases where we have gone a little higher, but we still require the flush mount, and that reduces the visibility of the things, of the towers, you know, as you back away from them and take a look at them.
So the planning commission brought it up to change it?
They wanted to change, yes, sir. That was their vote, their recommendation to change it, as it went forward to you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So I have a question, the two. I'm sorry, Derek, don't run away, I'll read.
You recalled me just now.
Yeah, I recalled you. The 199 feet sort of concerns me, and seemed like the time that I've been on this board, we've dealt with 150 feet. That seemed like there'd been, this board's practice, instead of the 199. Now, when you showed, I guess it's propagation or something, the coverage or something, and I was watching the coverage when you went from 70 feet, and you got up to 150 feet, and I was looking from the 150 feet to the 199 feet, it's just a smidgen of difference.
It's really hard to notice the difference.
I know, it just, I mean, it just, you have to really be looking good, because it looks the same. And the, I mean, the flush mount tower, yeah, they're in a business to make money, in a business to help co-locate people on it. But I think that when we step outside of our practice, that we've been, we've been doing for several years, I think it creates a little bit of concern for me, for the simple reason, if you put an authorized 199-foot antenna over there, and maybe to our neighbors up in Blacksburg somewhere close, somebody asks for a 199-foot antenna, and say, well, you just approved one over in Radford, what's going to happen when we get there if our practice is about 150 feet with the monopole, instead of the big old base? And they're requesting the, like.
The 14 and a half?
14 and a half, well, you know, well, I'd just soon have two smaller antennas and have that big spaceship setting up in the sky.
And I'll be happy to kind of, if you want me to provide.
Yeah, get some background on.
A couple of things. One, you're right, we do have several new members on the planning commission, and they, one of the things they looked at is, technology is changing. Cell phone towers are becoming much more like telephone lines are, and power lines that we're having to deal with. And it's a necessary part of our lives. Their goal was to expand and have one tower, rather than, and if you think about it, all right, you're going to have, if we put Verizon at 150, you had good coverage there. The next 10 feet down, not so good coverage. And so that means that the next company is going to be coming to us and saying, we want to put another pole up. And then basically, this one pole, the goal of the planning commission was to see one pole be able to take care of, replace four potential towers. And so to get that 10-feet spacing apart.
Oh, that's what it is.
They're starting at 199, and you get the next one down, but by the time you get down to number four, you're right down to that 150, and they're getting the same coverage. So Intello's is going to have the same basic coverage that Verizon has. And really, it helps competition. They did recognize that this was a break. There was that discussion, and Chairman Rice was, and he's, I think, the longest-serving, Frank Myles has just been recently reappointed, but I think the longest-serving member of the planning commission. And he was concerned, because as many of you guys have seen, and the staff does a very good job of trying to help us be consistent, to have those same rules apply everywhere. And he was very concerned about this, because he said, basically, how are we going to look people in the face that we've said, got to have flush mount? There was, in response to that, there was the saying of, look at all the cell phone towers going down the I-81 corridor. They're buildouts. They're designed that way, and people are used to seeing them that way. It's different than if you were going to put a non-flush mount, let's say, in Blacksburg, or going up Rush Mountain, or someplace else where it was going to be right in somebody's neighborhood or near there. And so that I-81 corridor was something that the planning commission was thinking about. There was a lot of debate, but they really looked at this as saying, this is a change, we understand that this is a change, but we think this thing on the I-81 corridor is different, and that this will take care of four poles, and that we won't end up with four poles in this area. And so that was the debate that went through, and we had a lot of, now we've got several engineers on that, the planning commission. But I do want to say this, there was a recognition also, that the planning department had, and our planning department had done a very good job. They were pointing out that this was a break from what we've been doing in the past. And I think several of the members recognized it, and I want, and one of them specifically said, hey, I know our planning department has done a good job, we're going against their recommendation, but we're looking towards a new day because of the changing in technology, and that everybody is going towards cell phones, everyone, you know, internet access basically through your cellphone, and the like. And so I don't know if I wrapped that up pretty well, I know we've got two planning commission members that are still here, that sat through everything to be a part of tonight's meeting, but I've done my best to be a good liaison and try to accurately. and try to accurately report what their thoughts were and work process was.
Just don't, okay, go ahead.
Let me say something, you know, I am way in favor of having a taller one rather than a shorter one, simply because of just what Chris was just saying. If we put 150 foot up, there's not going to be, you can have room underneath that, maybe for our safety equipment, but it's not going to pick up very much. Whereas if we get up to the 195 with a antenna to 199, then we've got about 35 foot of room that we can put up several more antennas and especially ones that our fire department, our rescue squads, all these folks, I don't know how much coverage they need out there, but if they've got anything close to what Verizon has got or the people that they cohabitate with on that pole, then it's money well spent for them and it's, in my opinion, it's wise for us because, you know, I'd hate to go and see four or five poles sticking up within 50 foot of each other. And that just wouldn't be real kosher to me. So, anyhow, that's what I meant.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you put 199, I'm just throwing figures out there. If you've got four spots, if Verizon's up top, AT&amp;T down here at the bottom, then you've got two more, that knocks emergency service out, correct? If all you've got is more spots-
There's going to be, as I understand the proper, we're number two on the list. So, we're at 180, you know, roughly, I'm saying, don't hold me, I'm not the engineer here, but we're at the 180 roughly.
What they told us last week was being 181.
Unless, they, just saying, if they call Craig, say, "We've got somebody wants this spot, you've got 14 days to put you something there." Then they move you down. That's not a guaranteed thing.
Right. We would need to act on that.
You're losing if you don't use it. So, you know, therein lies the secret to everything.
So, what I'm saying though, if you've got four and if three other carriers come in, that knocks you out.
Knocks you down.
I mean, if you've got four spots, that's all you've got. You've got Verizon and then three more carriers, you're done.
Well, if you don't have that many, you've got, if you've got four poles and all four of them get to our people, they're out anyhow. They were out before they got started.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I'm saying though, they're saying for emergency services, fire, sheriff, whoever, you get to a spot we may not be ready for right now.
Well, we can put it up anyhow. If we decide we want to.
And before I forget this, this was a rough presentation frankly with the planning commission. There was a time when they went out there to see the balloon test and there was basically, they had to download on, Verizon people had to download on our phones a GPS so they could try to tell us where the balloon test and where the tower was going to be. That was frustrating and not because of that, they worked through those issues, but I will say that this was not the most smooth presentation and I'm not, this is my first or second cell phone power, I guess we went out in Harding, but it was, it had some bumps.
Yeah, I was just curious about, we're talking about colocation. Has the planning department received any requests either in the past or do we know of anything in the future about putting a pole or is this the first attempt?
At this site?
Yeah, at this site or in the area?
Not having received anything at all in seven years in this vicinity here.
Okay. So, I'm just, I mean, this seems to be, I mean, extending it beyond what the Verizon was even willing to, was willing to make do with and, you know, going against, you know, established policy just seems like they're trying to fix a problem that isn't necessarily there. It's creating kind of this large, and not even, you know, doing the extended flush mounting, but allowing this giant array which Verizon didn't, said they didn't necessarily need to meet their coverage requirements. It just seems like it's going a little bit beyond what's necessary here.
Actually, I think Verizon did say that they needed a larger array. They wanted the larger array to come out during the planning session meeting, our commission meeting, that they said they needed the larger array to be able to meet their requirement.
Well, if they don't, then they have to occupy more positions down the tower. So, if you have to go up in height, if you decide to allow the modified flush mount, you can increase the top, the height and still keep the visibility, the view shed impact less by using the modified flush mount rather than that 14 and a half foot platform. You can give them some additional space, in other words, is what I'm saying.
And in our understanding at least from Verizon, that they would be able to meet their coverage requirement with the modified flush mount?
Yes, sir. That's what he stated last week.
So, the planning commission decided that even though they said that, they didn't need-
It was just, it's just what they felt was the best way to go and they realized that it was different from the county's policy, but that was the new thinking.
Now, at 150 feet with this 14 foot thing, they can put a number of antennas around that thing?
They can put, the way I read the diagrams, they can put four antennas on each of the three sides of the platform.
So, that would make, that's 12 antennas and we are roughly 50 foot, 50 feet lower. So, I mean, one wouldn't be higher than the other one and so, they could accomplish the same thing with 150 feet with the 14 or the triangle or whatever they put around it. Okay. I think the question, any more questions for Derek?
If they've done that, but they still need that big six foot dish? The dish is-
The dish has to do with whether or not fiber is there and the representative can explain that better than I can, but if there's no fiber, they have to have a dish.
Yeah. Don't go too, don't go too far. We have a right to recall you. Okay? Come on, sir.
Chair members of the board, my name is Jeff Geiger here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. With me this evening is Kathy Faulkner with Verizon Wireless. Also with me this evening is Guy Randall, an RF engineer with Verizon Wireless, who can answer specific technical data and questions that you have. And lastly is Drew Patterson, consultant to Verizon Wireless. Before I get into my presentation, I do want to take one moment to clarify something that's very important from the discussion I just heard. At planning commission, I stated to the planning commission that we could provide coverage over the area that I'm about to show you at 150 feet with a full array. The standard array that you see on every monopole in the county up and down 81. We cannot cover the area with flush mount antennas. If we put flush mounts on the antennas, you're getting another tower to cover the same area.
Then it's not, then it's not actually the arrays there in the county because county policy has been flush mounted. Am I incorrect about that?
That's what I understand and-
Yeah. So, perhaps these are in other counties, but not in Montgomery County.
No, they're in Montgomery County.
Montgomery County, flush mount.
Mile markers, where you can find them in the county.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been-
And there's one in Tuckett in storage right above us that's painted orange and white and it's filled out.
Okay.
Are you familiar with exit 118?
I am familiar with 118.
Do you remember the picture that staff showed you with the different types of antennas? T-bar, two platforms in the T-bar?
Yeah.
That's the tower. I took that picture of that tower at 118.
Is that in the town of Christiansburg?
Yeah. So, it's actually not in county, it's controlled by the town of Christiansburg?
Right.
Then you go, continue to the east on 81, you go to the county line, you've got four more monopoles along 81 that have the same type of arrays. If you started exit 109, mile marker, I guess it's mile marker 110 in the county and you continue to the east towards Pulaski, you've got three more monopoles over there with the standard arrays on top.
That's the west. That's the west.
Yeah, not the east.
To the west, sorry, to the west.
To the west, not the east. That's not our policy.
The first slide I'd like to show you this evening illustrates the coverage that exists today, the wireless coverage, the area in white shows the area that we are trying to fix with the proposal that's in front of you. This is a gap in coverage that exists from about the New River to about two, two and a half miles to the east along I-81. Employers, employees, residents who are traveling through this area will experience difficulty getting service and drop calls. Citizens who are traveling on I-81 or on the secondary roads in this area will have difficulty reaching emergency services and emergency services will have difficulty reaching them via the wireless network. Verizon Wireless would like to fix this coverage area, which is created by the topography that is in here. We're basically in a valley by putting in 4G LTE service. Verizon Wireless can do so with just one tower. It's the one tower that was recommended by the planning commission. With the planning commission's recommendation, you get the benefit of additional colocation inventory within this area to allow other carriers to do the same thing. The planning commission's recommended tower is consistent with the comprehensive plan and aligns with the goals of the regional approach to telecommunications towers. We work closely with staff to confirm that there are no colocation opportunities within this area that would allow Verizon Wireless to meet its coverage objectives. The new tower has been cited to have the least negative aesthetic impact. It's backlit by the mountain and few trees will have to be removed for its construction. The monopole will be painted brown to blend in with the backdrop. The design that was recommended by the planning commission is the same design that you see along I-81 that provides coverage within the county on 81. And as was mentioned by Mr. Tuck, the planning commissioners took note that wireless is now an integral part of our daily lives and these towers that you see on 81, you just ignore. They're just not there and they prefer, or if you do see them, you recognize that this community has a high speed, high quality network available for the wireless devices that you've invested in. There have been no letters of opposition with respect to this tower and no one spoke at the planning commission meeting. To address your comments about the precedent, I would submit to you that what you see along I-81 is the precedent that we're trying to follow. We don't want anything different than what is already provided, providing coverage along I-81. The planning commission did have the benefit of the knowledge of, you know, that there was a history of encouraging flush mount, but I would ask the board, just like the planning commission, to recognize that this is a unique area and we have the opportunity to provide just one tower to cover this area for both Verizon Wireless and for the other With the approval of the planning commission's recommended tower, the recommended height creates the colocation inventory that is lacking in this area, furthering the goals of the comprehensive plan. Only one tower will be required to provide coverage in this area for Verizon Wireless and for other carriers if they are interested. You inquire as to whether or not there would be other carriers who are interested. You can see these carriers on I-81. If you go and look at the monopoles that are on I-81, each of the antenna sets at different heights represents a different carrier. These monopoles have anywhere from four to six antenna sets. So, you have about four to six wireless companies operating in this area. Once this new tower and this inventory becomes known, they will, the topography presents the same challenges for them, there will be an interest in colocating on this tower. Federal law, this is the Verizon Wireless tower, federal law prohibits us from excluding our competition. Federal law requires us to allow our competition on those towers. Also, as was mentioned, we will be providing space on the tower for emergency services. We're not limited to just four spots. If the county does move down, if four coloccators are interested, the county can then move to the fifth spot. If the county wants to reserve space on the tower at the second spot, you can do that. Also, lastly, businesses and residents in the county benefit from new high speed, high quality wireless network coverage here within this valley. If you look at the effect of adopting a lower height, as I said, Verizon Wireless can provide coverage over this area for at 150 feet using the full array. But you lose out on the opportunity to have colocation inventory for other carriers. The height at which the county can install its equipment is reduced and then other carriers in the county may, and the county may need more towers to cover the same area. This is a table that shows you the different opportunities that are available at different heights, same table that was provided to the planning commission and was the basis for their recommendation to go with the 199 feet. That at 199 feet, you get four carriers plus the county at above 100 or at above 150, providing the same network coverage over this entire area throughout this valley. We also discussed in detail with the planning commission the trade-offs that would occur if you adopted or continued or used flush mounting antennas in just this area. We're not asking you to do away with the requirement, but for your policy, but just recognize in this area, you can achieve greater benefit by making an exception. With flush mounting, we lose the ability to put the technology that's available today up on top of the tower. We need that platform to hold the equipment and the technology that allows us to broadcast our signal across the entire area and provide coverage with just one tower. If you require flush mounting, we have to take two spots on the tower. It's three antennas and three antennas on top of each other. With the full array, you get 12 antennas and the full coverage over the entire area. This reduces the colocation opportunities and inventory, the height available to the county is reduced and the county also has to flush mount its antennas. Other carriers in the county may need more towers in the area to cover the area. This next slide will take you back to the existing coverage and I want to show you the difference in coverage between what the planning commission recommended and what staff has suggested. The key here is to watch for the greens and yellows. What you see in green are existing sites. In white again is the area that we want to fix. This is the tower recommended by the planning commission. We easily fill the area that needs coverage with greens and yellow, providing good and acceptable coverage throughout this area. Staff suggested tower reduces this down. We lose a lot of the green, we lose a lot of the yellow and we added circles to this propagation map to show you where we are losing that coverage as a result of coming down in height and adopting flush mounted antennas. On the day of the balloon fly, our engineer did go out and take pictures. I'm going to run through some photo simulations with you very quickly. These pictures were taken off of Little River Road, two locations along I-81, two locations in the business park across I-81, up on Charm Mountain Drive and then at Dry Valley Road in I-81. This picture here is from Little River Road. Engineer couldn't see the balloon, so from this perspective, you wouldn't see the tower. There's no simulation to give you since there's no balloon. This photo is from Interstate 81 southbound. The arrow shows you the top of the balloon and then right below the arrow, you can see the tower simulated. This picture is from exit 105. Again, the arrow shows the simulated tower. This picture is from Corporate Drive within the business park. This picture is from Center Court- This picture is from Center Court within the business park. This picture is from Charmont Drive, just peeking out above the ridge top. And then this picture is from Dry Valley Road, Interstate 81. Again, couldn't see the balloon, so there's no simulation. That concludes my presentation. I have more maps. I would be glad to show you if you are interested, showing different types of coverage using the different types of heights and antennas. But at this point, I would just ask that the board approve the S U P request, five Verizon Wireless for 199-foot tower, subject to the conditions approved by the Planning Commission with the changes made by staff. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions for him, but I'll just say, I have now, since the cell phone, this is my really first one to get through, I think, I don't know what the cell phone company was, tried to put it on Black Hole on Harding Avenue, I don't know what company that was at the time. But I have been driving around now, looking at cell phone towers from here, when I went down to my great uncle's family reunion, all the way down to North Carolina. And there are a lot of different ways to do things. One of the things that Derry talked about was in Applemore County there is you don't notice the cell phone towers nearly as much in there, along the tree lines, and they say they have very good coverage here. At the same time, going up and down I-81, I see lots of these bigger arrays. And so I know that there hasn't been, there wasn't any comments at the last public hearing for the Planning Commission, there wasn't any here to comment. And I don't know if, you know, obviously, we could put it to vote tonight, but maybe it would be a good idea for all of us to go take a look at the cell phone towers now that we've kind of got this issue before us and take a look at things. And then when it comes back for a vote here in a few weeks, not, in maybe even second meeting in June, to give us a month to look at things. I know that's not going to make Verizon happy, but I think it'll give y'all an opportunity. I've roughly had a month to be looking. And to me, I understand where the Planning Commission is coming from. They don't want to see, and there are sites that you have four poles going up right beside, all at the same height, and it looks, you know, you've got four sticks kind of going up. And I think that's what they were trying to avoid because many of them have been dealing with this for this first time and they've been looking at it. And that's why that they were looking at, I guess, a change in their mind away from the monopoles with the flush mounts.
Do you have a comment? Okay, Mayor.
Well, I'm struggling with the fact that I was on the board when all this first came to be and we actually had to create a policy and Marty was here, Carol was here, and that was here. And I'm struggling with, you know, the, what we were trying to accomplish versus what we have now. I'm struggling with if we have approved other ones that are like this, I'm struggling with that. So I guess, I guess I'm having an issue with, is our, is our policy outdated or something? Are we trying to move away from the environmental impact? Are we trying to, you know, go with the, I mean, I'm struggling with where, where are we going? I mean, I guess in my mind, I'm going with what we spent all that time doing, creating the policy in the first place. Now, is it true that we have others that we have approved like this along I-81? How many have we approved that are exactly like this on I-81?
I've only been here seven years, but to my knowledge, we've never approved any, anything but
Monopoles.
Monopoles and no platform antennas. We've always used flush mounts. Now, Mr. McMahon hates to hear me say that, but that's what we've done. Now, I give the attorney his, his comment because when you drive them down this interstate, we have many, many poles in this county, but they predate that policy. And, and so they're there and once, once you get them approved, you can't change them. So that's why you see all those poles with those big mounts on there. And you, as a board, evidently changed that policy around 2000.
What was happening is we were getting requests after request after request and we were trying to come up with a way to, to, you know, incorporate the technology into the environment so that it looked, you know, like it fit in, in sort of a nice way. And we were trying to also work with what Christiansburg and Blacksburg were doing. And we were also working with, you know, can you put them on the tops of buildings and all that? And it took, I mean, the way I remember this, it, this took what, over a year to develop the policy?
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess I'm struggling with, are we just going to abandon that idea and go with something else? And if we are going to do that, do we need to relook at the policy? Are the Plan Commission members coming on board? Do they, are they not aware of the policy and why we had it in place? I mean, that's what I'm struggling with because my mind is, I'm still back with how we came about doing this because everything was sort of overrunning the county.
I worked in the adjacent county at the time and I got an invitation from Steve Sandy to come and meet as you all were developing that policy and he wanted to include all the surrounding counties and cities and towns who were interested in, in having cement. So I was aware of it long before I came here, but, but to my knowledge, we haven't changed the policies at this point.
So the Plan Commission then decided, like you guys told them that this is the policy and they sort of decided, or the majority decided, well, we want to go in this direction? Like they're aware of what the policy was and why it was created, but they wanted to go a different route?
Well, I'm not sure if we effectively communicated all the details behind the policy and I will, I will take credit for that if, if that's the case, being that there were some, several new members. There's probably, how many, Chris, that were newer?
There's one that's only been on the Planning Commission maybe a month.
Yeah.
Trade rules. There's others that have been a couple of years, but I've only, I've been on the Planning Commission three years, roughly the liaison. This is the first one that's really come before in the last three years. And that's where Chairman Rice kind of said, hey, wait a minute, this is, I believe this is not consistent. At the same time, you had the majority saying, hey, look, I know we, y'all were doing it, but we're going to end up with four poles out here and that's not going to be a good thing and we think that that would be more, having four 150-foot poles is not going to be a good thing. That's where, when I say that they, and I recall Derry saying, look, this is not, and I don't know that we have ever approved a build-out array like we're talking about.
No, platform mount.
Platform mount.
No.
I thought that she said that during the meeting and it may have been it here, but that's saying, to her knowledge, we hadn't done that.
Okay, so basically, any of these that are out there were out there before our board had a policy. So now if we do this, then we're doing something that's different. I'm trying to get this all straight in my brain.
One of the examples I gave, Ms. Biggs, was a few years back, I'm thinking it was maybe '09, it could have been '08, but we had like eight tower applications in one year. One of those was a new tower, Mr. Creed will remember, off of Allegheny Springs, Ms. Jordan's property. Same thing happened, came in with a 199-foot request. The Commission and the Board finally settled on 165 feet, but they also required the flush mounts. There's two carriers on that tower today. I saw it the last time I was down that way, it's up there, it's doing fine. But it's not so noticeable without that 14-and-a-half-foot platform. It's, I mean, you see it, but it's not as bad as looking at that 14-and-a-half.
At the same time, we had to put in another one just up on the road from that, on 11460, like two years ago, I think is how long it's been. Right outside, right outside of the road. Because it couldn't reach it.
They had spot down, yeah.
From the other. They, they were about the same time.
I think that was Friendship.
Yeah, it was all Friendship.
Is that right? I remember that, but it, I think it was the topography and the mountains there that was creating the problem in that situation.
Well, it's always the topography and the mountains. That's what it is up here in Radford. That's what it is. Wherever you go, your, your topography is going to dictate how much pole you need in order to build something. I mean, that's just how it works. And, you know, if our policy says we're not supposed to do that, then I think our policy is actually wrong. I, I don't, it, it just don't make sense to me to leave yourself open to having to have three or four more poles. Because once one of them gets it, there's going to be somebody else that wants it. Because you just get better signals for your customers.
That's what I meant by, the staff was trying to follow what you were saying. That's why their recommendation is what it did, is because if they work hard, they do a good job and they were trying to be consistent. That's what one of the Planning Commissioners said specifically, he found it hard to vote this way, but he believed it was the right thing for the county, I guess for the long run, to do one pole. We may disagree with him, but I guess I'm looking at one pole as a good thing rather than four. And at the same time, I have great respect for the folks that work on our, for our planning department.
So if we do one pole for this, then the next one could say, well, you've already done it. So, I mean, what happens when the next one comes along then?
Well, destroy our policy. So we have no policy, basically.
Well, we look at what else is on I-81 and then we, let's say we have somebody wanting to do one in the neighborhood that's very different. It's not on an interstate. It's not dealing with those things. And so we, we look at each thing case-by-case basis and try to evaluate them.
But that's when you get into a real problem because you can't be, that's why we came up with a policy because we had to have some kind of format because if we didn't have a format and we were doing it case-by-case, then you can run into the problem of not being, what's the legal term?
Consistent.
Consistent or, there were, I think, isn't that why we had to have, isn't that why we wanted a policy? To help us make decisions and we graded them? I remember there was some kind of A, B, C thing, like did they fit, did they fit the criteria? I mean, you spent all that time doing all that.
It's, it's a part of the plan.
Back at that time, cell phones were not nearly as sp, everybody didn't have one in their pocket and sometimes too.
A lot of people had them or wouldn't have gotten the policy.
Well, they had some, but you know, it grows. It's grown, it's grown, it's grown.
But the other thing is how many people now use their cell phone for email to, to watch videos as they're going down the interstate with 4G to be able to
Hopefully not when they're driving.
The kids in the back of the car. The passengers, the kids in the back of the car, they're doing those things now that they didn't do beforehand. And so there, there's that difference. We are so much more dependent.
So you have to have a bigger tower with all this stuff in order to do that?
So we have newer technology, but so we need to go back 10, 12 years in the type of tower that we constructed. I mean, isn't there, isn't there, isn't there a way in between that we could do this?
I don't know.
And maybe, look at some things, but one of the things, I guess, I'm looking at it is, I don't want to see four poles at 150 feet. To me, that's aesthetics. Everybody here may look at that differently, but to me, I'd rather have one pole that, in, in, you know, the, you talk about not near backyard, right in the middle of our property that my parents have had for, since 1960s, we have now, it's orange and white painted. I don't know whether they changed FAA regulations, but it's right there now. It used to not have to be painted.
It's a lattice tower and it's painted orange and white striped.
Right, right beside our business. And so, but at the same time, I recognize, if you drive by, trust me, you can't miss it.
So it, is it in the county?
It's in the county.
But it's so old, it's been there forever.
Oh, it's like there's one's a whole way on what's been there forever.
And so I guess, I'm looking at, I say, is it a necessary evil that we have now? We would have preferred it to be dropped a little bit so it wouldn't have to be painted orange and white with a red light on top of it. But it's, that's got to be FAA regulations. But Matt, you may be right, maybe there's a compromise in between. I guess what I'm trying to say is for me personally, seeing four poles is a bad thing. For you personally, seeing the bigger array may be a bad thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and Mr. Greger might be right that most people, or some people driving on I-81 don't notice them. I mean, I notice them. I mean, the giant monstrosities that stand out and block the view shed when you're, when you're driving through, you know, these beautiful mountains that we live in. And so, you know, if we can, if we can mitigate that as much as possible, I mean, I have a cell, I'm connected in every freaking way I can think of. I mean, I don't go anywhere without a, you know, a tablet or something like that. I'm not like unsympathetic to this, you know, and I certainly have noticed that driving down I-81, you get spotty coverage, but at the same time, like, I don't want a 200-foot tower with this giant build-out, you know, noticeable from, from every angle. And although, you know, on those pictures, you know, you didn't see it from certain areas, you did see it from a lot of other places.
Are you talking about the balloon?
Pardon?
You talking about the balloon?
The balloon, yeah.
The balloon was three feet wide. The balloon was three feet diameter.
Yeah, and it's, so it's going to be, what, four times?
And plus you're going to have a pole that goes up.
Plus you're going to have a big pole that's going to go upright too. So it's going to be much more noticeable than a three-foot balloon. So, but you're right, I mean, it's, it's an aesthetic call.
Well, it's, sound like, I don't, I don't know, a policy might be dated. We might have to look at it and adjust it some to
To what though? I mean, are we being told that we can't do monopoles because the new technology requires these big things with the spread out? Is that true or false?
Yeah, it's not the monopole, Mary, it, the monopoles that slip around.
Right, but we need this big thing, we need this big platform because if we don't have it, we can't have the new technology. Is that true or false?
No, I think what you're being told is to maximize, in order for the communication companies to maximize their ability to co-locate and provide more density of service, they need the taller poles with the arrays.
Okay, so you could provide service though and not have this big thing?
Yes.
Correct?
About as much.
Yes, it's like you could have 150-foot pole and, and with, and they say they still want the build-out at 150 feet to be able to get what they want. So they want, so instead of the build-out being 150 feet, but if you look at the 199, there's really spots, not just for the county's one spot, Verizon's spot, but another three spots at, because it, there's one at 161, if you drop down another 10 feet, there's another spot for another one. So literally, this could take the place of four towers and have, and also put everybody on equal footing in providing that coverage.
Are we talking about four towers though? Marty has something.
Good.
I give up.
I'm going to, I'll start with it in perspective with the policy. When we set up the policy, we set up a hierarchy of areas.
Right.
Basically, we were telling the carriers, don't go in these areas because you're probably not going to get it approved. If you go in the other areas, you have a better chance. So that was one of the reasons we had that. And the other things we did, about the monopoles, we were worried about the view sheds. And so, but our policy, I don't think technically or specifically says you can't have full arrays, but what we've done in practice in order to protect the view shed is we wanted flush-mounted antennas. And that's been our practice. Now, what you, and we've also said, we want co-location. We also said we wanted to protect the view shed. So there's a balancing that the board has to consider. Do you want a taller tower that could be seen to allow co-location? Or is this an area you want to protect and not have it taller and you're, you're more willing to have smaller towers that you may not see as, as easily? Same thing with the full array. Full array, they can still do their technology, but they're telling us they can just shoot it further, they can cover better with the full array. They put the flush-mounted antennas, they're not going to be able to cover it as well and they may have to come back in the future with another tower or they may have less co-location on the tower. So that, those are the trade-offs.
Very good summary, Mr. McMahon.
Very, very good.
Very good summary.
The policy is, it's never really black and white. It's about guiding and it's about what, what do you want to achieve? And you may want to achieve co-location, you may not. I mean, it depends on where the tower is, where it sits, the effects. Because remember, when you do special use permits, it's all about trying to, to solve or protect what is being affected negatively from the request. And so that's where the difficult part is. And so, towers have never been easy, Mary.
I know, and that's why we spent all that time trying to come up with something to work.
Right, and, and this board's been very receptive. We've approved many towers, and we've also gone to the Fourth Circuit and set good law on, on a tower that we didn't approve. What we did approve, we needed to prove at the height they wanted. And so, that's just, you know, where you guys are on this situation.
Can I ask board members with more experience than I have? In my understanding from tower debates, there's usually like 30 people here saying, "Do not give me a tower. I do not want a tower. This is not, not in my backyard." But right now, I haven't heard, now, maybe they, they didn't, there's not a lot of houses around there. Maybe because of that, we haven't got a lot of information out about this town, and that may be possible and part of it.
That's, that is a part of it, I, I believe. Because we even have to go across the interstate to notify the city of its own request, because the industrial park's over there, okay? But we have to go across the interstate, and we have to go to the adjacent property owners. Well, there are very few occupied properties right there. There's only three, four houses up that road. And so that, in my opinion, is why you're not getting a mass of people, and you're like you expected over by... You saw the ones that came in for Harding.
Yes.
And, and...
We don't, that would raise...
I think so.
I think the policy that we set was to protect places that were...
They can change that policy.
High with houses and, and, you know, such as Blacksburg and Christianburg, or around any of the fringe man areas. We wanted something to set, something that we could look at and say, hey, this is why we're doing this. And what we're talking about out here on the interstate, well, they can shoot for a long ways.
But part of our attraction is the mountains that we live in, and that's what draws people here to visit us, too. So you, you all have the, the difficult job of deciding how you want to solve this, and all we can do is pull the information together, and, and you have to decide which way you want to go, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll take your guidance.
You know, I, I have a question just for the board. Would this be something, and maybe Ruth is back here, that we could put this on a website, asking for comment from citizens specifically? I know it was on our agenda and the like. Just to see if we could get it out there a little bit more, make it a little bit more transparent in regards to the decision. And, and like I said, I know that this would technically be slated, I guess, to be voted on on June the 9th. Is that right? But maybe put it off to the, the following, to give more time for citizens to have impact. I know that it won't necessarily make the applicant happy, but at the same time, it would make it also very transparent what we're doing and try to get as much citizen input as we can.
Should notify the city of Bradford as well?
Well, they're the ones, they're the applicant. Well, the party, not the city is, yeah, but not the residents of the city of Bradford.
They should know about it as well, if we can get them to advertise to their citizens.
And then I'd also encourage that my fellow board member's scared about his cell phone towers, like I've been doing the last few weeks.
It's been hard to drive down the interstate, look at what's down.
What do you think, now?
Yeah, yeah. Any more questions for Derry? Well, yeah.
I think he was coming back.
Okay, if you want to come back, sir. You got a comment?
He has to go to the office.
One board can't, can't hamstring another board.
You change the policy...
You change the policy any day you want to. And maybe that now is the time to look at the policy and make a little longer in the campaign. Or to just tweak it.
Certainly, you certainly have the right to do that.
What's wrong with tweaking policies?
Well, you got to be careful about why you tweak it. You don't want to just do it in response to one person's request at one point in time.
I'm just saying, it can be done, if you, but you're not doing it haphazardly.
Chair members of the board, if I could, there is a federal law out there that, or a federal regulation that requires this case to be heard within 150 days. Just spoke with the county attorney. Would request that we be kept on the June 9th agenda, but would welcome, you know, whatever opportunities there are to publicize and encourage people to come out and participate at that here.
Well, I, unfortunately, I will be in New York City Shack running 50 school programs on that date, so I would not be here, but if, if that's what the applicant's desire is, then they can...
Marty, when's the, when's the expiration of that 150 days?
I'm not sure. He was saying if we went to the other two weeks, it would probably be within that. I mean, the, the parties can agree to extend.
Yeah, and I'm, we're happy to extend it, but I...
But, but, you know, at the same time, yeah, I mean, if you want...
Is it 150 days from the application?
It is finally from...
Okay, and when was the other?
From the acceptance of the application.
Okay, and that was...
Really, February?
Yeah. February, okay. Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's still 150, it's still 150 days from the date of the application, from the acceptance of the application, even with the deferrals built in within that time. And if, if, I'm happy to extend it. I just wanted to, we, we do routinely extend it. We're at the, I just wanted to alert the county attorney to this deadline that's out there and go with whatever route is best for the county.
Does everybody think they're going to be there at that meeting? Would that help?
I would not be there for the June 9th.
No, I mean, the next one, are you...
I would be here for that.
Whichever that one is, yeah.
Trust me, I, I think, you know, you're talking chaperoning a bunch of kids.
16, 17, 18.
It's 23rd?
Yes, ma'am.
23rd?
23rd.
Is that within 150 days?
No, that's what he's saying. 9 would be, 23rd might not be, so...
We could agree to extend it.
Yeah, you can handle 23rd. No problems with 23rd.
I'm, I'm happy with the 23rd. And then I would ask if Ruth would maybe update the webpage and put this out as an issue, that we're looking at a cell phone tower with a wide array at 199 feet.
We can do that.
I would agree.
Make sure to put the address of where it's at.
Yes.
People, because the tower up there and the tower down here, it's going to be two different places.
Okay, I guess we need to open up for the public, in case the public here to speak.
They don't have...
Seeing none, I guess they couldn't wait that long. At this particular point, if we have no other comments and things, we'll go on and close this public hearing. Okay, now...
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, that we'll just be back on the agenda on the 23rd?
The 23rd meeting.
So are we continuing this public hearing?
No, it'll be on the agenda for...
For action?
Yeah, for action.
Okay.
It'll be on the agenda for action. And having no other public hearings, we'll close our public hearings for tonight.
Wow.
Then we did have a...
Did have one request for an addendum.
We had a request for an addendum, and that was what Supervisor King had. I made myself a note, so I wouldn't forget it. It's the dynamite on the storage. Is it, was it stored...
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, well, we got to first put it on, do you?
I guess you moved it to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, you moved, put it on the agenda.
Second.
We got a, okay, I got a motion and a second. Any comments? Okay, will clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
But I was sure what I was saying.
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Did it get worked out about it?
Put it on the agenda for the 23rd. Because I just stopped...
This is what the...
This was... I just want to have a seat there.
We, we added during the agenda, you stay, you act on it.
And vote on it.
Yeah, well, we're going to, we're going to vote on the 23rd.
No, no, I mean, this thing that we just added.
No, it'll be under, you say, Mr.? Okay, it's, that's a...
But is everyone thinking and worked out about it? Is everybody okay about it?
Well, just put on the, yeah.
You can discuss that when it comes up for action. Voted to add it.
We voted to add it. The addendum, now, we can, I guess, take action on that item now, before public addresses, and then move on with public address.
So we have to wait until new business?
I would suggest that you add it underneath business, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay. Have it added on a new business. Okay, now we'll move to the public address session. Anybody like to address the board? Not even the newspaper guy?
Yeah.
Well, public addresses are now closed, and now we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And need a motion to go into work session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fix?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
I started to suggest, since they'd waited so long, that we just defer this item to the next meeting, but...
I would have gotten...
Oh, no, you said...
Well, he's going, and I need to go, too. Oh, well.
All right, let's talk about something really fun, since we're finishing cell towers, and talk about state budget.
What budget?
Pardon me?
What budget? You don't have one?
Yeah, or the lack thereof. Actually, this is just sort of an introduction into the work session tonight. And I want to start with a presentation that was given to the House Appropriations Committee recently. It has to do with, it was presented by the Division of Legislative Services and some of their senior attorneys. And it talks about, well, what happens if there is an appropriations act? And I think Marty sent you the full presentation last week, and thankfully, I am not going to go through that. So what I'm going to do is just skip to the end and talk about several points that were takeaways from this presentation. The first one is, if there is no, no state budget on July 1, the Commonwealth will be navigating new waters. Well, if there are new waters, and they don't know where they're going, then we don't have a clue what the impact is going to be on us. Absent an appropriations law, neither the executive, legislative, nor judicial branch may appropriate or spend money from the state treasury. That means if they can't spend any money, we can't get any of their money, and that is a big issue for us. In the absence of an appropriations law, the governor could declare an emergency, but have no money, no money would be available to deal with it. There actually, and I wanted you to see this part in particular, IOUs could be a substitute for payment. I'm sure I don't have to tell you all that we can't cover payroll checks and bills with IOUs from the state. The scope of the executive order declaring such an emergency is not known. As of last Wednesday, the chair of the House Appropriations Committee sent a letter to the governor requesting that the governor outline what powers or legal authority he would have to keep state government open after July 1. And that is currently still being debated. As sort of a segue into what Mark is going to present for you tonight, there was an article in the Virginian Pilot on Saturday, and I'm going to read the first couple of sentences from that article. "Some local government officials in Virginia are starting to consider contingency plans for worst-case scenarios as a budget impacts drags on toward a possible unprecedented state shutdown on July 1." So what Mark's going to be talking to you tonight are about some of those worst-case contingency plans that your staff has been looking at, what it looks like for us, and some alternatives about what we may have to do if the state doesn't resolve the budget situation by July 1. And with that said, I'm going to...
Can I ask just one quick question? This, you said this was a presentation made to the House Appropriations Committee from the Division of Legislative Services. Has the governor outlined a, his interpretation of what the impact would be?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
He could have, and I, I'm not aware of that document somewhere.
Thank you.
And with that said, I'll turn it over to Mark.
All right. I do have some paper copies, if anybody would like.
That's good.
Because we don't have it on our... We don't have that.
Just give them some paper copies.
Cop box. All right. My name's Mark Maru, I'm the county's budget manager. I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on, I guess, the lack of the state budget and what implications that may have on us. So this is the, the first year in which the state may be in a position where they may not adopt a budget for July 1. But traditionally, the state does approve the budget for the next year. And this budget provides a spending plan and resources to affect the operations of all state and non-state agencies that receive money from the state. And that includes political subdivisions, which is the county and school systems. If the state would fail to adopt a budget, the operations of the county would be affected. So we went back, and we looked at how much state revenue is actually contained in the budget to see what type of fiscal impact the state and non-state budget would have on us. And on the county side, there's $16 million in state resources that is dedicated to county operations, and that includes money for constitutional officers, social services, Comprehensive Services Act, state library grants, PPTRA, which is the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, and other state resources. On the school side, there's 50.5 million in state resources dedicated to school operations. So taken together, you're looking at 66.5 million of $171.5 million budget. So the big question is, how long can the county operate without state monies? I went back nine months to look at our actual operations. And if we continue as we originally planned for fiscal year 15, we could operate for about three months before all of our available funds would be expended. So I started with our estimated cash balance, which is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $40.5 million. Right out of the gate, the first month of the year, you have to pay a major debt service payment. That's going to be $6.3 million. So after that first payment, you're looking at $34.2 million. The next thing I looked at was how much we actually spend on a monthly basis. And you can see here that between the general fund, school operating fund, the school cafeteria fund, we're spending somewhere in the neighborhood of about $11 million a month. So after that first month, with $11 million coming out, we would have $23.2 million left. We would only pick up about $1 million in revenues in that first month. And one of the things that I looked at was, if the state is not operational, a lot of the monies that are locally collected monies that are funneled through the state, we would not receive as well, such as sales tax, consumer utility taxes. Taken together, that's about a million dollars worth of revenue that we wouldn't receive if there's nobody at the state to remit that money back to us. So under normal circumstances, we would have, and those local dollars, somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million coming in during that first month. But if the state's not operational, you're only looking at a million.
When you say your estimate... When you say your estimated cash balance, are you including regular funds?
Everything, everything that you got.
That's the whole bank account.
I have a, a follow-up question too. Are, are the school operating fund, like, the school expenses consistent even over the summer months?
There, I, I, yeah, I mean, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but there is a significant amount of, of resources that are spent for payroll purposes and the first.
A 12-month contract. Yeah, a lot, yeah, a lot of teachers are on 12-month contracts.
Are they take their pay in 12 months if they're on a 10-month?
So after one month, you're looking at 24.2 million dollars, and then again, if we're hitting 11 million to 12 million dollars a month going out, it's not gonna take too long before, um, we're out of money, and that basically happens in month four. So these are some questions that would need to be answered, um, these are not all the questions, but just some of the things that kind of pop up, um, that we're gonna have to deal with. A lot of the agencies that provide services to county residents rely heavily on state funding, and so some of the things that we'll have to consider is, you know, how long will the schools operate without state monies? Will there need to be a delayed opening because of this? How will the sheriff's office operate without state funding? How long the regional jail will be able to operate on their reserves? And then, the bigger issue is, what kind of overcrowding issues are we going to have, based on this type of scenario? Social services, how are they going to be able to operate on local monies? In the grand scheme of things, you know, they have roughly between a 5 and 6 million dollar budget, there's only about a million dollars that's local money, so there's a significant amount of services that are going to be able to be rendered. And then, will the clients of state agencies be leaning on the locally-supported outside community agencies, which also rely heavily on state monies and things of that nature? So, um, there's a lot of questions that we will need to address going forward if this goes forth as we are seeing. So let's look at some different options, you know, how we can deal with the situation. Um, I'm presenting three alternatives. Alternative one is we appropriate the county's total fiscal budget. Under that scenario, we could operate for approximately three months. One of the big issues with that is, if you appropriate the schools' budget, you're on hook for the entire amount of money, so that, um, under the current code, if the state would not decide to, uh, adopt a budget and they stretch this thing out, you would be required to make up that shortfall for whatever you appropriate. So if you say, there's a 100 million dollar budget and the state doesn't come forth with their money, you're on the hook for it. Alternative two, we could develop a plan to reduce services and only appropriate those monies to make our monies last longer than the three-month period. And then alternative three is, we could appropriate monies in an amount for about a one-month period, uh, to give the state additional time to approve a budget. I did a, a little research across some other localities in the state, and, um, oddly enough, a lot of people are thinking that the state's gonna come forward before June, uh, 30th with something, so that the state will continue to operate, but, um, you know, we don't know that that's gonna happen, and we need to be prepared if that doesn't happen, so, um, the recommendation that we have is to, um, look at alternative three and appropriate county monies in an amount to cover both the county and state funding obligations for a one-month period. This would give the, the state more opportunity to, uh, to approve a budget. Really, this option gives the county the most flexibility and the most options. By appropriating the county monies for a shorter time period, we can continue operations without being required to cover the state's portion beyond a one-month period. Again, if we appropriate the schools' total budget, you're on the hook for it, um, regardless of, uh, what the state does. If the state does not approve a budget, we would have additional time to develop a, a strategy to, uh, limit county operations to county only funded functions. And then if the state does approve a budget during that one-month period, we would be in a position to appropriate the balance of funding, um, without resorting to drastic cuts or the disruption of services. So, uh, the next steps, um, the board will need to adopt an appropriation resolution prior to July 1 for the county to continue to operate, and we will prepare a partial or full budget appropriation, depending upon what the state does over the next month, so that you at least have the option to, if the state doesn't act, to only appropriate one month's worth, you know, you're on the hook for it beyond that period.
So what does that mean for the schools?
Um, that means that we would have a month's worth of operational support for the schools, and then during that month's time period, we would have to come up with a plan to, to address how the county and the schools are gonna function beyond.
But would they be able to issue contracts?
Nope.
I would say, no. I would say, no.
I mean, you'd only have one month's worth of authority.
Yeah. Starting October 1 or September 1 or whenever they do.
No, you'd only have authority through July, July.
You could only through.
Right. Right.
And they're gonna be effective August 1st this year because schools are starting so early.
Because of what? I'm sorry. You know me, I can't hear worth of tutored.
Because schools are starting so early this year on August the 12th, I believe the contracts will be effective in August instead, instead of September, so that makes a little bit difference too.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought, but anyway.
I guess, at this point, our plan from a staff perspective is to keep you guys as informed as, as we are as this moves forward, but, um, as we move into June, if there's no resolution at the state level, uh, staff's recommendation is to go with the alternative three that we mentioned, and that is just appropriate funding for the month of July, and then see what happens during the month of July. Uh, that does assume that, um, you know, the state will also, I guess, in essence, hold us harmless, uh, if we start appropriating.
I guess it'll give us an overview.
Um, it's, yeah, it's hard to pay your electric bill, one of those, though.
I was gonna say, hold you, huh?
Comments, questions?
It's a mess.
I'd like to say, um, thank you to the staff for looking ahead and, you know, I guess, some counties of things are, are waiting, says, well, they'll pass a budget before June 30th and so forth, but thank our staff for not waiting and having a plan. Because, you know, I think Mary and I talked today, and we're, you know, we're talking about budget and, and a lot of things, and, uh, but to see some forward thinking on, on the staff's part is just wonderful. I might not have the right answers, but just see the forward thinking, you know? But when Mark got up, I thought he was gonna have a plan.
He always go write a check. He's got all the IOUs in his file.
Yeah, they'd be IOUs.
Well, I think the, is, is, thank you for those kind words for staff, because I think as we've talked about it, the sobering thing is that, you know, the, the county is in a very strong position financially, but we could blow through everything we've got in three months if the state doesn't step up.
Um, is this a good time to talk about the VACO call on Thursday?
It's the same thing, it's talking about the same thing, the budget and so forth.
On Thursday at 4 o'clock, there is going to be a conference call and, um, for VACO members to call in, and, um, it's sort of like what you guys presented, VACO has a list of things, um, that will be impacted, and I can send that to you guys, um, and I can also send you, if you didn't get, it has phone number, and I know Bill and I have to be interviewing at that time, so I asked Craig if he could be in on the call, and they're urging us, um, to again, contact our delegates and senators, but, uh, if anybody would be interested in also covering that call, we can, you know, send you the, the call-in number, um, 'cause I would imagine any VACO member that could, that would be good for you to, um, I'm just sorry that we won't be able to, to participate unless it goes on longer than 5 o'clock.
Yeah, this document, you know, went across the state to all VACO members.
Yes.
And it's like five points. How will counties fund services? How and when will counties begin the determination of essential versus non-essential services? How your county, will your county have enough reserves to fund services? Will your county have to re-adaptize your tax rates based on the lack of state funding? And the last one is, how and when will counties begin to notify employees and school personnel of temporary furloughs and layoffs? So this thing is much, much, uh, larger than Montgomery County, it affects the entire state and the independent cities and things.
Did everyone get that email?
If you're a VACO member, you.
Did everyone get it? So you guys have that, so you can call in? Oh, that would be great.
But it'd probably be so many people calling in, all you could do is just listen.
But that's good.
You won't be there to ask a question.
That's good, though.
Yeah.
Need to be represented.
Okay, any more questions or comments for the work session? Motion to go out?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Go out of work session, clerk please call a roll.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item on our, um, agenda is the six-year road improvement plan. So thank you, guys, for your leave, really appreciate you. Uh, six-year road improvement plan for secondary roads?
This is, as we discussed from the, the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, uh, these are basically the same roads that have been included on the six-year plan, um, with Mount Pleasant being the first priority, Honey Woods second, Sidney Church's third, um, the, the Mount Pleasant Bridge fourth, Yellow Sulfur Road fifth, and Mount Pleasant Road, um, sixth. These are all separate projects, uh, that are in the six-year plan. This is different than the revenue sharing money that we allocate for certain projects, this is just what's in VDOT's six-year plan.
So you need a motion approval, right?
Need a motion for approval, yes, sir.
Have a motion.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, it's kind of late, I don't think it's no discussion, so would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, we're in a new business, and we'll get your addendum after, after we take care of this one here. Uh, we request the Commonwealth Transportation Board to restore funding for the Route 460 South Gate Drive interchange project.
Make a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
I had a question about that. Wasn't there some comment by the Secretary of Transportation that he, he was going to or had restored that money?
Going to investigate it. Yeah, investigate.
Investigate.
Yeah.
And, and from what tech said, that's very important for their next phase for Virginia corporate.
It, it has something to do with all the, the planning to go on campus, moving to the dairy farm, the extension of the airport. There's a number of projects that's in the pipeline, depending on, on this.
The secretary's comments were very favorable, but I, but I certainly feel that we need to continue to emphasize the importance.
Motion?
And there was a, a second, yeah.
Oh, we got a motion and a second? Okay, the clerk please call a roll.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Addendum time.
What about the?
Uh, broom and a broom.
The broom, yeah.
Okay.
Don't forget that cleanup.
Okay. Mr. Chair, this is just a, a resolution celebrating the folks who came out on April 26th. We had 21 private and public organizations and over 150 volunteers that participated in the day, and it was a great effort, and we just thought it would be nice to recognize them with the resolution.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second? Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Can we get to the addendum now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, the, um, storage building, storage lot set, yeah.
Like, make a motion.
To, to, motion and a, a motion to approve and a second? Uh, any discussion?
I have a question. Were all those, um, issues taken care of? That, there seemed to be some issue between planning and county attorney?
None of the light industrial.
Not in that light industrial.
Not on that one.
Just, I mean, just to give you what would happen was they, we came in with, wasn't anything to be used.
The contractor services.
Yeah, they wanted to make it by right in, um, M1 light, and then there became discussion about, well, in these type of uses, you know, should we allow storage outside or not? Currently, you're not allowed to have storage outside. And so then, you know, the debate kind of went on, and I think it was, um, the board member Kat said, well, hey, why don't we allow storage outside, but we do it by SUP? And, uh, and so, the whole board agreed with that change, and they directed us to make the change. And then, the way our ordinance is set up is, if you look in each district, um, the uses are either allowed by right, or they're allowed by special use permit, or if they're not listed at all, they're not allowed in either. And then there's cer- certain regulations that apply to some of those uses, like setbacks and stuff like that. And so when they came up with said, and they said, well, let's allow by SUPs this type of use, but with storage, so we had to create another use, because that use has to be listed in the SUP by right, not by right, but allowed by SUP, the board said. And so that's why we had that. And the other thing to do is, we added not only M1 light, but we also put it in M1, because the board said, because contractor service services are already allowing it. And so we said, well, if you're gonna allow it in M1, and you want to sometimes grant the right to have stuff outside, then it should be in SUP in that same district, and that's why I was adding there.
Okay.
That's what you told me.
Thanks.
I think we had a motion and a second, right?
No, that's for.
Uh, the clerk please call a roll.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
County administrator?
Just one brief comment, appreciate those of you that came to the VDOT six-year, um, public hearing last week. Um, as you're well aware, we did receive very good news about the parking ride lot being fully funded, and also hard news that they will be considering the South Gate interchange, uh, as well, um, but, uh, in all my years of going to those meetings, that was by far the best one I've ever been to, it was really good. Other than that, no comments tonight.
Uh, Mr. Tuck?
Couple of things I apologize to the citizens and my fellow board members, I will be missing the June 9th meeting, I will be in New York City, as I said previously, chaperoning about 50 kids, uh, high school age, enjoying New York City with them. Second, I want to commend board members in regards to the parking ride issue. Mary went to the governor's office, her district is in Blackfield, Bill Brown's district is in Price's Court, and he made it a priority in regards to moving the parking ride. We all went forward, because this was an area issue that, that we believed affected the whole county, and, uh, I would just like to point that out, that it was, it was a bipartisan issue and that we did it together. Thank you.
A good role model for other governments.
Mr. Gabriel?
Superb. I'll keep my report very brief, I attended the Tourism Development Committee, uh, meeting last week, as well as the Economic Development Committee, uh, Commission's meeting last week as well. Not too much to report, there were a lot of, um, positive comments and questions about the parking ride issue, um, and I answered them to my, best to my ability, I told them this was a VDOT thing, and it's actually gonna be paid by VDOT, so that's, that's all We'll know more about that relatively soon. Some of you may have been contacted as stakeholders. The company that's doing the marketing campaign is going to be interviewing in the next couple of weeks. Mayor Barber attended the EDC Commission meeting and talked a little bit about things going on in Christiansburg and had a nice conversation. Yeah, that's... Keep my report brief, and that's it.
Okay. Mr. King?
Just one thing. Sorry I didn't make it to the VDOT. I come here to the Falling Law Enforcement Memorial, and I just want to say Sheriff Witt done a wonderful job that day and everybody involved, and I appreciate what he does.
Okay. Mr. Crean?
No report.
Ms. Perkins?
Okay. I'll go to my hearing. I really just have one thing to ask. Do you have any additional information for us, Mr. Meadows, about the intermodal site that Brian went... Meeting that Brian went to for the MPO?
They are continuing to discuss that at the Roanoke Valley MPO. They're having a study done. He did send me a very detailed report that's just general about intermodals in the region, and I'll be glad to pass that on to you guys. There's not been any specific recommendations regarding the Elliston site. And as a matter of fact, the information that Brian sent me, as I went through it, seems to indicate that that site doesn't make sense from a cost standpoint for Norfolk Southern. That when you look at the cost, I think they call it lifts. When you look at the cost of the lifts, the number of lifts that would be done, if I remember correctly, and I'm just speaking off the top of my head from looking at the information he sent me, the cost of the lifts were very high compared to most facilities. So I've not heard any conclusions that have been drawn from that work.
I think it was just an update before, but they are continuing to take care of the road, to build the road.
Though, yes.
603, it's going to take, what'd they say, 15, 18 months?
About 15 months.
About 15 months.
That contract's been awarded.
I don't understand why they're widening that road from Aronto into 460 if they're not somehow other planning for.
The big reason is...
What?
The big reason is that they have so many wrecks over there right along there.
Oh, I know, yeah.
That gives them another outlet instead of having this traffic backup so far.
Sure.
So that lets them come all the way over 460 real quickly and then get in and out and go.
Well, I hope that's what it is instead of the Elliston business. And then the other thing is that sometime in June, and I will come back to that, they are having an open house at the MPO area down in Roanoke. Everybody's invited. It goes on for about three hours. You can come in and go out and find out what's going on. You don't stay for three hours. But anyway, if you'd like to see that, but I'll come back to that later. Thank you, that's all. Oh, and I do want to say thank you, Marty, for what you sent us as far as the budget was concerned, too, the constitutional issues. That, to me, was very important because something in my brain just kept saying, yes, constitutionally, certain things can be done and certain things, I guess, cannot be done. But thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the VDOT meeting. It was really great. And besides all of our board working together, the parents at Falling Branch just did an outstanding job getting the message out. Sheriff Witt did an outstanding job when he spoke to us about the issue, and the press did an outstanding job covering it. And I think all those things together, all those pieces worked to create a really good environment. So that was a really good meeting, and I feel very positive also about the funding for Virginia Tech after, and South Gate after listening to that. I just wanted to briefly tell you guys that at the library board meeting, we're finally getting the Floyd County employees that work at the Floyd County Library to be part of the Floyd County system so they don't have to run their payroll through the Montgomery County Finance Department that's been going on for a long time. Not that we pay for them, but we've just been... It just runs through. And so Floyd County is trying to now view the library employees as their county employees after all this time, so that's a good thing. Also, did the air conditioner, I guess that got worked out, the air conditioner issue at Christiansburg Library got worked out. At the Community Services Board, we are continuing with Rosemary Sullivan being the interim director at this point in time because of the changes in the board membership, and we felt that it would be good for her to just stay on at this time. And the only other thing I have to report is, I had an email from VACO asking if I would serve on the Local Composite Index Committee, so I might need some help with that. That's always a big issue. And the only other thing, I'm sorry that I missed the memorial for the police officers. That's the first one I've missed. But I felt like I just, I was so torn, and I had to go down to see about the parking ride, and they're both so important, public safety issues, but I know it went well. And that's it.
I'll slip up to my... I'm going to say, echo just a little bit about the transportation meeting on Monday night, that even the parents, so many of the parents went, and they were prepared to really speak. And when the secretary spoke, a lot of them just broke out in tears crying that their prayer had been answered. And I'd like to thank the people from Virginia Tech, the people from town of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, they, in their presentations, they mentioned the parking ride in support of us. Dr. Wilson. Yeah. And I have to say this, too, right quickly. I thank the staff, but I'll tell Karen that she has three wonderful people. I mean, they got up and they answered a lot of questions, and they were very knowledgeable about what they presented to us. And they always say a mark of a good leader always surrounds herself with good people. And so that's it. And let me do one more thing.